All right. Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Budget Hearings for the 13th of November. And we're going to kick this off with the city planning. I'm Bobby Wilson, the Chair of the Economic Development Committee. And for this hearing, we'll hear from the city planning first, and then we'll hear from the Department of Permits, License and Inspections. And we have some council members coming in, and we also have some ones that are joined online. I'll announce them as they appear. We have Councilperson Strasburger online, and we also have Councilperson Sharlin here in person. And typically how these run, at least, you know, since I've been here, we'll have our Budget Director do an overview of the department, and then we'll hand it over to the department to do an over... Do you have a presentation?
Yes.
Okay, and you're all set up with that?
Yep.
Great. And then we'll turn it over to questions from members. So, Peter McDevitt?
Thank you, Councilman. So today, we're going to start with the Department of City Planning. And the mission of the Department of City Planning is to work with partners to plan and deliver a vision for the city's future grounded in a just transition. The Department of City Planning is divided into the following divisions: Integrated Planning, Public History, Art and Design, Strategic Planning, Sustainability and Resilience, and Zoning and Development Review. Review of the position summaries, there are additional two positions, full-time positions in the Department of City Planning for 2026, for a total of 56 full-time positions. And a quick summary of the changes in non-personnel costs. Overall, it's a $40,000 non-personnel decrease, and that comes from the removal of some computer maintenance costs and professional services due to the removal of line item for Building I software. And in the capital budget, there is one line for the Department of City Planning for war memorials and public art for $100,000 of pay-go funding. And you will also see a little overview of trust funds. There's the Green Initiative Trust Fund and the Open Space Trust Funds that City Planning has. And there is also a list of the fee schedules that City Planning manages. And that is the overview for City Planning.
All right. Thank you, Peter. We'll turn it over to Play on the Department.
Thank you, and good morning. Thank you, Councilman. I'm Jamil Bay, the Director of City Planning, here with some of our leadership team and staff. For today, we'd like to just quickly run through what we'd hope to cover, and just talk about our strategic plan that we've completed and how we're operating and implementing that through a just transition, review our mission and strategic objectives, what we've accomplished this year, follow-up on our update from the comprehensive plan, where we are with our staffing, and then get into, you know, 2026, our operating capital budgets and initiatives that we plan to take before, you know, we move on to questions. So beginning with that, I'm going to let you turn it over to Deputy Director Dash to talk about our strategic plan.
Sure. Andrew Dash, Deputy Director. You know, kind of all of the work of, you know, the department was really guided by a strategic planning process which we completed, you know, mid-year in 2024, where, you know, we included as a part of our strategic plan, kind of defined a new mission for us, which was noted by the Budget Director. Make sure that as we were establishing that mission, that it was set as the foundation for the PGH 2050 effort. Worked on and identified how we collaborate not only internally as a department, but externally with other organizations, how we engage with new ideas, and how we make sure that we have pathways for professional development of staff as they come on and move through the career ladder here with us. You know, as a part of that, we did define internally as a part of the strategic plan, you know, our just transition strategy for, you know, how we focus ourselves, so really focused around, you know, those, you know, kind of ideals of equitable redistribution of resources, retaining our cultural heritage, social and ecological well-being for all, and regenerative economies and life-affirming work. As was noted, you know, as a part of that process, we did define, you know, our mission and strategic objectives as a department. So as noted, our mission is really to work with partners to plan and deliver a vision for the city's future that's grounded in just transition. And the main objective for us to be able to do that is, you know, that, you know, City Planning, you know, enables, you know, city government and its partners to take big coordinated actions to advance that just transition, to be a center of excellence in terms of efficiency and customer service, and to create a sense of pride and responsibility amongst staff. And so, you know, that's strategic, you know, that mission, the strategic objectives, then, you know, are, you know, what were defining us as we, you know, kind of approach, you know, our work, especially our work, you know, kind of where the major operations of the department really are invested in the comprehensive plan. So with that, I'll turn it back to the Director, who will walk through major accomplishments.
So, you know, the department has been busy this year. We've launched a project updating design guidelines across city historic districts. This initial phase included Shindly Farms, the Mexican War Streets expansion, and the Roslyn Place Historic Districts. We've also renewed the Western PA Energy Consortium MOU with 26 entities. This will cover the period of the next five years, providing momentum for continuing renewable energy sources for the region, leading government and educational institutions. Additionally, we've completed an evaluation of the vending program that was discussed yesterday in council with PLI and DOMI, and introduced legislation to amend zoning and vending ordinances toward a vision of having a clear process that expands opportunities and improves equity for vendors. We also created a series of zoning amendments to implement the city's housing needs assessments, including the introduction of accessory dwelling units, parking reform, and affordable housing into the code. And we are on pace to work on approximately 10,000 applications this year, ranging from property certification to major developments and master plans. And I think this is the final one, the zoning code reforms that eliminated minimum lot size per unit and reduced the minimum lot size across all residential districts. So the department's been busy, but we've also worked on bringing money into the city and into the budget. We've secured grants in 2025 for our communities, including the Climate Smart Communities Initiative, which is $100,000 for seed funding for Lincoln-Limington, the Trust for Public Lands, a $25,000 grant, the solar panels at TPW and Forestry, which is $337,000. There was another quarter of a million dollars from the U.S. Conference of Mayors with Connect, and then Afema Brick Relocation Policies and Proactive Development Regulation Framework is about $300,000. Additionally, brought money in through grants with DOMI, $2.4 million for the EV chargers, another $1.4 million, the Resilient Cities grant implementation for the state... No, that wasn't the Resilient Cities, but the RCP grant implementation for the State Route 65 with DOMI, and the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission grant of $45,000. So we brought a lot of money into the department, into the city's budget to continue our work. And so we've been able to leverage your investment into the department to achieve other city And from there, we'll let Sharonda bring us up to speed on the comp plan.
Hi, everybody. Sharonda Watley, Assistant Director of Strategic Planning for the Department of City Planning, City of Pittsburgh. And so I'm going to share a little bit about where we are with the comprehensive plan. As you all know, we have two sort of streams of work, one for engagement and also for technical work related to the comprehensive plan. And so I'll be able to give a snapshot of where we are to date. So with, we have been very busy since the public kickoff in January with engagement across the city. So some of this I shared on Monday, but we have launched a photo campaign. Our 90-to-1 photo campaign is nearly complete with 88 of the 90 neighborhoods represented. We also launched a 90-to-1 survey, which is also nearly complete with 1,000 responses from across the city. We've also launched additional surveys related to the phases that we're in of the technical work. And so those are housed on our website at PGH2050.com. We've hosted seven citywide public events, including the kickoff, two citywide workshops over the summer, and then here recently, four workshops related to the scenarios phase that we're in right now, about two or three weeks ago. We've also hosted one public forum around the just transition, where we brought in national experts with local experts around equity and sustainability. We've partnered with over 50 organizers and organizations throughout the summer and into the fall for our Summer of Engagement, also associated with our mini-grant opportunities. We've attended over 100 community meetings to share and update residents on the comp plan since before the kickoff. And we've had also countless one-on-one conversations with community members, as well as community leaders. We have also created a presence and identity through social media, through our website, through the Planning for Purpose podcast, and also through having materials at bus shelters and as well as bike kiosks, as well as libraries and different things like that across the city. We have engaged and activated the steering committee, as well as all of the working groups. And so this represents about 300 folks working alongside us in developing the technical recommendations of the comp plan and also in working with us with engagement. We've conducted over 100 interviews with local and regional experts related to the 20 topic areas that are part of the comprehensive plan, and we've also had quite a bit of news coverage. Next slide, please. So this is a snapshot. This is, this map is available on our website. And so as of November 1st, this maps where we have either held a comp plan event, attended a community meeting, had a mini-grant opportunity, had conversations with community across the city. And so our intention is to update this monthly with where we've been. And so if you toggle over any of the icons, it gives you details about the date and the meeting or the event or the opportunity itself. And so to date, we have engaged over 29,000 people. We're sharing information about how we have engaged and got the word out about the comprehensive plan. We're also sharing information about how many visitors we've had to our website, as well as how much data we've been able to collect from our engagement. A little bit of a snapshot on the technical work. So as part of our Phase 1, we took a deep dive into the 20-topic areas to create existing conditions, as well as a little bit of a policy analysis for each of the topic areas citywide. And so this is all available on the website as well. So there are 21 topic books, I believe, on the website that do this deep dive, as well as a four-pager learning guide. So it's a little bit of a snapshot of the bigger document. For Phase 2, next slide, we started to look at how those topic areas were relating to each other. And so we started to pull together the State of a Just Pittsburgh narrative, which includes five pillar books. And so each of those topic areas are represented in those pillar books. And so we started to understand what some of the intersectional issues were related to each of those topic areas. And so that has been a really great resource for community, as well as the subject of a lot of our engagement over the summer. For Phase 3 is the Shared Vision for Just Pittsburgh. And so this brings together all of the insights that were captured and reflected over the summer. We've also incorporated all of the feedback from the 20 or so topic areas that we have, and as well as the feedback from the State of a Just Pittsburgh pillars. And so the shared vision uplifts 10 vision statements that honor Pittsburgh's roots while boldly shaping a future that is anchored in growth, affordability, sustainability, and shared prosperity. The vision statements are organized into four groups, so Foundations of Stability and Growth, Systems of Adaptation and Access, Belonging and Equitable Outcomes, and Governance for Lasting Change. Next slide. Oh, thank you. So our current phase is Phase 4, where we are testing future development scenarios. And so we have worked alongside the consultant team in developing three potential development scenarios for the community to react to and respond to. And so this was the focus of our current phase of engagement. And so those three scenarios are A, the attainable city, B, the prosperous city, and C, the climate resilient or climate-ready city. And so this attempts to bring together four macro policy areas, so housing, jobs, and economic growth, mobility, and climate, and trying to understand what the balance is of all of those things across these different scenarios. And so the community has been able to understand what the scenarios are and also the different components of each scenario and how the macro policies are showing up in each of the component, in each of the scenarios. Next slide. Thank you. And so where we are today, we are in Phase 4 of 5. We just wrapped up our Summer of Engagement back in September, and we have launched our Phase 4 with the scenarios. And so there is not only in-person engagement opportunities, but there is also a digital survey, as well as content related to these scenarios available on our website. And so, next slide. And so for, the final sort of deliverable for Phase 4 will be a preferred scenario. And so we are taking all engagement and feedback, as well as any data and research that we have done throughout the previous phases, to analyze and synthesize what we're learning from the community and from other experts to have a preferred scenario. And so Phase 4 goes through the winter, and so we don't think we'll have a preferred scenario for several more weeks or a couple more months. And so we are going to continue to work through Phase 4 with the community and with stakeholders. And so, excuse me, and so what's next for us? There's still quite a bit left with Phase 4 and Phase 5. And so again, identifying that preferred scenario, continued engagement of residents and stakeholders, updating our public engagement guide, as well as continuing to host workshops and public forums throughout Phases 4 and 5, as well as the actual drafting of the comprehensive plan itself with land use recommendations, goals, policies, and strategies, implementation plan, as well as the development of a digital dashboard with trackable metrics, so that we can understand our progress as we implement on the plan.
So that takes us to our, I guess, our org structure. In addition to, you know, our current staff, we were looking to include, I guess, transfer to existing positions from OMB or from the Mayor's Office, where we get support from, what is it, a policy analyst and our engagement specialists. And so whereas a lot of that work that we were getting support from that, the Mayor's Engagement Team, sort of to manage our engagement and communications page, we'd like to move those in-house. And so those are already occupied positions that we're transferring just across the city. And for 2026, you said that, you know, our budget is about 6% higher than it was in '25, primarily because of those position changes, but then balanced by the two programs that we're losing with Clubify and the other professional services that we're no longer requiring. I'm going to turn it over to talk about position for art to Kevin.
Yeah, so our one capital budget item per year, which is per the percent for art code, which averages approximately $100,000. We're proposing for 2026 will be Larmour Neighborhood. So just as a background, this year was focused on Manchester, and then the year before that was Hazelwood. In addition to Hazelwood that year, we had three other ARPA-funded percent-for-art projects, which for the Greater Hill District, Beachview, and the University Line. So right now, we have 4% for art projects, kind of in various stages of progress, and then Larmour would be number six for 2026.
So our major initiative for 2026, you know, including the inclusion of the comprehensive plan, we'd like to implement the first round of housing needs assessment changes, including the continued reform of residential zoning districts, continue the iteration and integration of the hazard mitigation planning. Said we took a deep and heavy lift to sort of elevate the city's efforts in hazard mitigation to make those things eligible for federal funding, as we are working on some of those issues across the city. The transit-oriented development strategy, completing around the Brushton and the South Hills Junction, revisions to the historic preservation, percent-for-art program expansion, continuing the study of the State Route 65 in the North Side, and continued streamlining process, permitting process, along with DCP, with, along with DOMI. And the strategic plan, continued implementation, the work that we've done to build our strategic planning out our work for the next few years. And so with that, you know, we'll turn it over to council for any questions.
All right, thank you. And then I will turn right back over to the members. We are joined online by Council President Lovell, Daniel Lovell, and then also Councilperson Warwick. And we'll, I'll take it as the order they came in. I believe Councilperson Strasburger, you, you were here. Do you have any questions?
Hello, I should be joining in just a few moments in person, so please take someone else's first, and I'll join then.
All right, great. Councilperson Sharlin.
Thank you. Thank you guys for being here. You know, appreciate that for the first, first budget, kind of the start of this process here. The question that I'm going to be asking all departments here, in our budget situation that we're in, you know, you come to us and you kind of have, these are the things that we would like to do. We need to be asking you, because of the situation we've been put on in council, where are spaces that you can find that you can reduce the cost in your department? We're going to have to do that at some level to, you know, to all the departments. It's easier for you to tell us where you think you can cut, where then us determining, you know, what we think we should cut out of your department.
Completely understanding that situation that council and the city are in, we said we were looking at the news the last few days, this has been the driver of the story. But that us to... But up to this point, you know, that hasn't been our approach to thinking about this. And so we haven't made the time to think about, okay, this is our wish list, which was the way that we've been preparing budgets, you know, to this point. We haven't, as a team, thought about, okay, well, where is our minimum standard? What can we do? And that's, as I said, that's something we would, we could think about how we approach that conversation internally, but it's not one that we've had yet.
It's one we need to have. Unfortunately, that's a position that we've been put in. You know, again, I can look through your department and say, all right, we're going to slash these positions, whatever, you know, I, but I would be doing it, you know, ill-informed. I want to, you know, give you guys the opportunity to think, where are spaces where we, we think that we can make cuts here?
It's, it's, it's an important conversation, and one that we need to have a complete agreement with you, but it's not one that we've had yet. And for me to say, okay, here's where we could cut, like, on the cuff, I would be making that same mistake, you know, without thinking about where that impacts the team and how, you know, that aligns with what we're trying to do next year. I couldn't give you that answer in this space. And as I said, that's something that we would need to huddle and possibly come back to you with after consideration.
So as soon as possible, you know, we, we need you to get that to us.
Can you, am I allowed to ask questions here? Like, how's this process?
Of course, yeah.
Right. I mean, so if you, it would be easier for us if you said, rather than as soon as possible, if you said, okay, by this time period, and that, so that we know, so that we have something to work with.
Yeah, I mean, we're in the, we're in the budget process right now, so we're going to be meeting with every department and the authorities and all throughout over the next couple of weeks here. But, you know, I think with, you know, with this request here, I think we need that within the next, probably, you know, by Thanksgiving or something, what you're kind of what you're looking at.
And the conversation that I know I'm going to have pushback from is, hey, not my division, like, sorry, the same conversation.
Yeah, every director's going to say, not my department, you know.
Well, not my department, and then I'm going to hear from not my division, you know, and...
And then I'm going to say, not my district.
Understanding where, like, that, we have to think about this holistically, in a comprehensive way. And we said, we'll, we'll huddle and come to that, have that conversation, think about what that looks like.
Okay.
If I can perhaps offer two items. One, I think, over the last two years, our budget has decreased. I mean, I think there was a slide, was it, 9 million decreased down to 6 or 5, and then, you know, the budget goes up this year due to transferring staff. Last year, we did have some positions cut, specifically the public art manager was cut from the department. And I think it's been like a huge effort internally to accommodate that position that was cut, and I think we're doing a fantastic job. But I think that, you know, overall, we have been operating at a reduced budget over the last couple of years.
I, no, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the situation. I think that's, you know, I think a lot of departments are going to come to us and say, like, we've been operating on an austerity model for, for some time here. I imagine we're about to hear that from, from PLI as well. At the same time, even if you were operating on an austerity model, we can't pass the budget as it's written on this model. So, you know, if the belt's been tightened, we need to find ways to tighten it more. You know, one, so obviously, a thing that I'm really passionate about is, is housing production in a city. And I think I've brought to, trying to remember exactly who was all in the meetings when we were doing the standing meetings, the concept of, you know, how we don't track how much housing production we build in the city of Pittsburgh. And then I want to codify that and make it clear that we know in 2025, we've built, you know, 1,000 units or whatever units. Have we put any thought into making that a real process? I, I, I know that you were in the meeting, but I actually cannot remember if it was Dr. Bay or...
Yeah. So, you know, I think relative to the idea of a housing dashboard, this is something that was obviously discussed and put into legislation that is pending before the Planning Commission. I mean, this is also work that was identified...
But to be clear, that, that dashboard is for affordable units.
Well, I think, I think even...
What I'm asking for is, I just want a number of how much we built this year.
Let me, sorry, I'll, I'll get, I promise I'll get there. And so, you know, we have been, you know, even though that was kind of put into legislation, we have been in conversations with Innovation and Performance and, you know, our housing planner around, you know, what a larger housing dashboard looks like. I mean, this is work that we want to be able to portray as well. And one of the, one of the position moves from, I think they're presently in the Office of Management and Budget, is the Policy and Planning Analyst. We do see that as a, as a, as a project that they would be working on, is the housing dashboard development. Because I think we want to be able to paint the entire picture of how the city is changing and relative to housing that goes into not only what affordable units come online, but also, you know, how the city is changing. Because we are seeing, obviously, an increase in households here in the city, even though we're not seeing as much in the way of population gain at this, you know, in the last few years. You know, that change in households, obviously, will require us to be building more housing to, you know, to, you know, to, to deal with that as a, as a change that we're seeing here in the city.
Yeah, and I'm not even asking for, I mean, obviously, that is an entire different discussion of like, how we make sure we're building the right things where, I'm not even having that. I just want a raw number.
Right.
And, you know, I, I asked for that about a, you know, year ago. IMP said that there was, you know, not something that we could, we could create in-house. Then it was able to be created, you know, for campaign purposes out of Office of Management and Budget. Somehow it is something we can, we can create, you know, and it is definitely going to take collaboration between planning and probably PLI and IMP. I just, I want to know that that's coming.
Yeah, it, it, you know, that is our intention, and it is, and it is, you know, I think we've done it as kind of... done it as kind of one-offs with our partners at PLI to be able to pull permit data to do that, but I think we want something that is more robust than that, that is, you know, available to the public, that is consistently showing either year over year, or quarter over quarter, or however, you know, however we can define that, you know, how that is changing, and how that is changing as a response of the work that, you know, our zoning and development review and permits license inspections are doing as far as, you know, the work that is kind of, you know, being processed through permit review.
Okay, yeah. I, you know, I think that's, we're making a lot of decisions with vibes and not data. And it would be, I think, you know, in a lot of this discussion of, of these policy issues, we're, you know, we're, we're arguing over like, over numbers, that we should be arguing over policies, but we should all have the same data to, you know, to go off of. And I, I don't, I don't understand how that isn't something we, you know, can provide and we're, how we've gone this far without that. So, you know, it is something that I, I think is kind of like a step one for, for this department that they, you guys need to, to figure out. I think we've talked, you know, I don't want to reiterate the conference of plan conversation much more. I think that's all for, for me right now, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Councilperson Warwick. You may...
Yeah, sure.
You can go now, or I can move to...
No, no, that's fine. Apologies, I had to step out, I got a call from my kid's school.
All right.
Everything's fine. Anyway, yeah, so, um, I think, oh, one thing that would be helpful, actually, this is maybe for the clerk or for Pete, I don't know, if we could get paper copies of all the presentations. I know that's, you know, very wasteful and whatnot, but it's hard to see on the screen, right? So like, we can't, you know, anyway, that's just for all the, the directors going, going forward.
Just send it by email, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever.
I mean, that's true.
Paper and email.
It's just nice to, at the table when we're listening to the, you know what I mean, to be able to take notes and kind of see what, you know, see the presentation. I know that makes me sound a little outdated, but at any rate, um, so I guess I, I don't want to go too much into the comp plan, because we obviously just talked about the comp plan. But, but one question I do have is, is, do, do we get a number on how, how much money is left on the comp plan? How much is unspent?
Uh, what's remaining for the technical work is just over 1.3 million.
1.3?
Mm-hmm. And then what is remaining on the engagement contract is 1.25, just over 1.25.
On engagement, okay, so a total of 2.55 total, okay. I do want to say, just sort of in terms, and we did touch on this a bit, at the, at the meeting on the comp plan, is the amount of work that it seems like the city planning team is doing on the comp plan, right? Like, we paid $6 million so that, because our, because our internal team did not have the capacity to work on this plan ourselves, right? Like, we, we have a city planning department, but the department didn't have the capacity to work on the plan, and so we paid $6 million to consultants, yet it feels like our city planning team spent an awful lot of, or is spending an awful lot of time working on this comp plan, right? And, you know, again, we talked about the tabling, the events and whatnot. I don't necessarily want to go back into that. You know, and, and the $6 million that we, that, that we've contracted out is actually more money than the entire department's budget each year for the past few years, right? So it's just, um, you know, at, at any rate, I just, that, that, it definitely raises, it raises eyebrows for me, that just kind of, you know, about, about what we're getting again, for the $6 million. And I think that's worth examining, right? Taking a very close look at what, you know, because there's a lot, I mean, I know it's like, it's, you know, when I hear things like a photo, what was it, like a photo something, like a 90 neighborhood photo thing? You know, that, it just sort of makes me wonder what, what that is, right? At any rate, okay, we, we don't need to go too, too far into the comp plan again, we did already discuss it. I just think generally, and I know this is my, I always hesitate to kind of make broad statements based on like personal, you know, just like sort of anecdotal personal experiences, but it, it, it does seem, and I think, and I don't want to, maybe I'm kind of like flipping the, the question that, that Councilman Charlotte asked of like, where can you, you know, where can you cut? And I understand that's hard to say, but I think that I might want to ask, where can each, you know, each employee at city planning, like, sort of become maybe more efficient or increase capacity for each individual person? And I, the, the feeling I get, and again, this is, I, just as an outsider kind of working, is that, you know, is that, it feels like there's some teams that are doing a lot, right? And there's other, but then I've also, it's, it's sort of like, it feels like it's up and down, but then I've also had situations with city planning where I've, I've asked for something, and I don't, we don't need to get into specifics, but, you know, where we've actually had a meeting and been like, okay, yeah, and then could I get, and like, and it's like, no, we don't have the capacity to do that, no, we don't have the skills to do that, or simply like, you know, oh, could I get, you know, help with set up a call or something like that? You know, could you help me organize departments around a particular issue? And it just like literally has not happened at all, and I've just done it myself, because that, you know what I mean? And so I think that that is, is, is an issue, especially in a department where we're, where it, you know, planning is kind of like the, it's like sort of an academic exercise, right? So, so like with, with, with a DPW or a DOMI, if stuff doesn't get done, right, like, people are screaming, right? Because like, we have constituents that are like, I need this fix, right? There's water running in my whatever. And so we have something very clear that we can say, this didn't get done, this, but, but with planning, if it feels like the thing isn't getting, then, then we just kind of move along or move around it, or just work directly with the departments, or just say, oh, well, never mind. And, you know, and I don't think that's, and that's not the intent, and there are so many people in this department that are doing good work, that I think that, that that might be beneficial to kind of take, so, so, and I know, like, when we, it's just tricky when we, we talk about planning, and so often, it feels like, it's like, you know, whether it be a plan for a park, or a plan for, you know, I, you know, what, it's like, oh, well, we can't, we can't do that plan, we got to get budget to do that plan, whatever the plan is. Like, we can't actually do it in-house. And I think the question is always there of like, well, why? Why can't we do it in-house? Like, we have 56 people, and, you know, it would be nice to get to a place where that, the expertise to actually do the plans, at least more so, if not in, in its entirety, are, are within the team. I mean, I don't know, I, I'm, that's just kind of the, I don't know, I, I'll, I'll just leave it at that. I know it's, it's, these are difficult conversations, but, you know, and, and looking at the grants, you know, so, so the planning team, it looks like brought in like 1.2 million dollars in grants, but then you add the planning team together with DOMI, and the grants get much bigger, and you just kind of, I don't know. Again, it does feel anecdotal. And maybe that is because we don't have like the hard, you know, like the hard data of like who's working on what and what, you know what I mean? But, and I know that there's been lots of legislation, and, and it has been a tough year for getting things through on the housing level and, and, and those types of things. But, I don't know, I guess, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I'm hap- happy for anybody to make comments, you know, with regard to, I just, I, I think for myself, I would like to see in the city planning team, like, a little bit more clarity about kind of like what everyone is doing, you know? I mean, I, like, you know, even, and, and I, I love our neighborhood planners, but I mean, they're, you know, I would love it if my neighborhood planners were like actively engaged, because my team does a lot, like around whatever, right? When it would, I mean, having a neighborhood planner who's, like, I mean, I'm out knocking doors. Last night, I was out knocking doors in Hazelwood just to, to try and get people out to a city planning commission. Like, I would love to have some support from city planning for that kind of thing. At any rate, you know, so, so that's kind of, I'll, I'll just leave it at that, I'll leave it at that.
So what I'll take from that, sort of a summary of a conversation that we, we were having, the three of us, just, just the other day, looking at how, you know, like you said, you, you all acknowledged that there are good, you know, you do have some good relationships and experience with planners, but where we really come up short is telling our story effectively. And so our year-end report is like, like, you know, just this list of a bunch of words, like, how are we communicating and telling our story better? That's something that we definitely can and should do. And I think, you know, that it shouldn't just be that we have to tell a story, that our story shows in our work, but, you know, you don't have, you're busy too, you don't have the capacity and the time to follow what everybody's doing. So we should be able to, here's a snapshot that provides that for you. And that's probably something that we can improve on. You know, we were talking about the, the way that Cincinnati does that report at the end, like, like that's a good example of, wow, here's a nice shot of what their planning department does. And I think we can do something like that. So I, I hear what you're saying, you're not, and understand where you're coming from.
I mean, I would love to get to a place with city planning where every director across the city, and I do, and I hate to sort of, and I do, just because Cory Lehman is sitting next to me, the, and I don't mean to sort of put you on front street here, but the zoning team, I, like, I, has, I know what the zoning team does, like, it's very clear, right? Like, I, I mean, I see that work happening all the time, right? But I would love to get to a place with the planning department where like literally every director across this city is like, I love city planning, they have helped so much, we are engaged, like, we, oh, they're doing this, 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 like, this whole thing, like, basically that city, because it, it feels sometimes to me like with a, a given project, whether it be a playground, or something with, you know, whatever it may be, or a traffic calming, or whatever, that like, the department and my office are doing this engagement, like, working with, you know what I mean? Like, getting the feedback, trying to figure out what people want, and, and, and that feels like something that city planning should be at the heart of, right? Like, your department should be the department that brings it all together, you know? And I don't know if that's more about defining the role for the neighborhood planners, or I, I just don't have enough insight into what, what each group is doing to kind of give recommendations.
That's a heck of an endorsement for the comp plan. What you're saying is basically, we need a plan that sort of maps how these things speak to each other, how these systems work together, and how we operate as a city. Thank you.
Well, yes, but also, I mean, yes, but it would also be helpful to have just like, you know, outside of the plan, like the, the, the individuals, right? Like the person, like the people, right? The people connecting the people. And I know that we do a lot of that as councilmen, council members, right? Like, we're connecting people for our districts, but, I don't know, there's just been so much, like, there's been like the PRT plan, which, you know what I mean? And I polled all my groups together and did all this stuff around like, the, you know, the bus line redesign, and then like, now there's like the PPS thing, and I'm just, I'm not clear like where city planning is, and these are massive things that are happening in, and, and it's not clear to me. I mean, even with the comp plan, right? Like, is that siloed? Is there, is PPS, is that part of the comp plan? Like, is that like synced up, or the bus line redesign? Like, are those two major planning oper, you know, or I guess they're not planning, but like major changes to the city, are they like incorporated in all of these conversations? And...
They, they are participating in our conversations, and, you know, we've been regularly meeting and working with, they're on our steering committees, and so they are, we, we are having this conversation together. And it's, it's new to Pittsburgh, and so it's novel, and it's like, hey, does this work? Can this work? Is this how, this is how effective cities will run.
Yeah.
And that's where we need to get to that point. We need a first plan, we're going to have to iterate that, but we, we need a comprehensive plan that shows how these systems speak to each other within the city and within the region.
But I think that what would be very, I mean, just because we are so siloed in everything that we, right, I mean, and like, like DPW has to do DPW stuff, like, they've got to do all, you know, and like DOMI has to get to do, and, you know, and they, and they work together, but it would be nice just as a department, you know, we've got these 56 people, or not all, like, I know that some are, are doing the, the zoning and the planning commission work, so that's a little bit separate, but like, to help, right, connect with PRT, like, to help make sure, I mean, even the mayor's office, it's hot, you know what I mean? Like, because you can, but I just feel like the, the, the potential is there for the, whether there is a plan or not in place, to just literally like bring the parties together and make the conversations happen in a way that a city council person can do, but doesn't necessarily do, right? Because it's not necessarily the role of the council person to do that, it's only if they want it to be, right? But if, I just feel like as a department, sort of figuring out the role of planning in helping all the other departments work better, both on their own, with the community, and, you know, and with each other, and then with all these, you know, with the county, with PRT, with PPS.
And this is some of us telling our story a little better, because some of this is happening. I mean, we have a monthly meeting, you know, with all things stormwater, with DPW, DOMI, Pittsburgh Water, Parks Conservancy, where we have that monthly conversation, what's happening, how are we thinking about these things, where are they intersecting? And so that's, you know, that happens. It happens across some other spaces. We, we need to do a better job of lifting that up and letting you know where we are, where you can plug in, and, okay, that's taken care of.
But is city planning organizing that meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I would say, in addition to, I mean, you mentioned PRT, I mean, we, you know, like, we have a planner that works on transit area development issues, you know, they are, you know, after this budget meeting, we're going to spend some time with DOMI and PRT in, in, in meetings that we structure as a part of that, as we think about what the relationship of development and, you know, the, you know, our transit system looks like, as, as PRT tries to navigate, you know, what it's doing relative to its plan, as well as its current challenges, you know, so, I mean, those are, so, I mean, I think that, you know, again, to the director's point, I mean, maybe those, those are just things for us to be able to connect better on, to understand what issues that you have so, so that we can try to help in being able to kind of facilitate those conversations, if they're conversations that are with your office, or if they're conversations that are broadly, more broadly with community.
Just to add a little more clarity to, I, you know, I think we, we have more frequent than monthly meetings with PLI and DOMI, both DCP to DOMI zoning and DOMI on projects, and then two other additional series of meetings around our development review, one stop, all of that coordination, which is, you know, it would add up to multiple reading, you know, three to four meetings a month, you know, that are just in that area, and I'm sure PLI will speak to that as well, but that is another area where there's connections. And I imagine if each of us said, you know, where we connect with different departments, it would be a pretty significant web. And so what I'm hearing is a need for clarity, I think that's something, and what I'm hearing from the director is that we would like to provide that.
Yeah, and I think a real, actually, a really good example recent is this thing with the, with... And I think a real, actually a really good example recent is this thing with the, with the vending, right? Like that was a, for me anyway, it was a very clear, like everyone came to the table from the different departments and it was clear. It was clear what's, and, and city planning obviously is putting forth the legislation because it's zoning legislation, right? So again, that's like with the, with the zoning changes, like that, that, that feels clear to me. It's, it's some of the, the, the other work where it, you know, it would be nice to, at any rate, I, I, in addition to just having the conversations though, it's like, what is the product? And in that case, you really could see the product, right? The product is that legislation that I hope, you know what I mean? Where like the, you know, and it was brought to the table and council members making changes and, you know, or whatever suggestions, right? The RCO program, oops, is a little different, right? Like that felt like something where it was like, and I, I shouldn't, I don't want to speak for Councilwoman Smith, she's not here, but like where we've been talking about something for a very long time and then, you know, finally there was a moment of frustration and then that sort of resulted in, but, but maybe that's not how it happened. I'll just, anyway, I'll leave it at that. I'm starting to ramble, so.
All right, thanks. Let's go to President LaBelle.
Thank you. Based on what I'm looking at, it appears there's two new positions being added to the department. What are those two positions?
Those were occupied, uh, those were positions that were currently occupied in the mayor's office, positions that we were receiving support from, from their engagement and the analyst. And so we were moving those positions into the department for us. And so they're transferred of existing positions.
Okay. And what are, what are the positions?
One is, what's the exact title? There's a policy analyst and the other is our GIS engagement.
So the one position, the one position is the digital engagement coordinator. Um, does a lot of management of EngagePGH. Um, there was a position, um, you know, kind of in the previous mayoral administration that was moved into the mayor's office, um, you know, at the time, you know, doing that work. This is moving that position, you know, into, into city planning. The other is the policy and planning analyst. Um, you know, this was as, you know, Councilman Charland did, you know, kind of discuss, you know, the person to do more kind of data research and that work in the department. When we did our strategic plan, it was, you know, kind of the primary capacity that we didn't have presently in the department that was, that we had looked, you know, that we had looked for. It was a position that was, you know, that was removed in, in, in last year's budget from, from the mayor's budget to what was finally approved. So, you know, it's getting that capacity from an existing position that is in the mayor's office.
Okay, thank you. Also, in your presentation, as one of your sort of 2026 deliverables, I believe, I saw the Adopt a Lot program. Can you say a little bit more about what you're trying to do there?
Sure. So we've been working with a lot of nonprofits and otherwise on how we steward properties more generally. So this is both around the Adopt a Lot program, which, you know, currently exists, has been in place for about 10 years now, and the Greenways program, which has been in, been in, in place since 1981, I believe. Um, but you know, these are both programs where the city, um, you know, in partnership with nonprofits, with residents who are active, um, you know, has residents that are doing stewardship. So we've really worked to, through 2025, to be able to engage folks around how those programs can change to be better responsive to the needs of the public, whether that is that there are things that they can't do in an Adopt a Lot, uh, you know, lease right now that they want to be able to do, whether it's how we balance that need for, you know, people to want to be able to take on an Adopt a Lot, uh, project and have some security in the lease that they have while at the same time understanding that these are temporary programs. So we do look forward to bringing legislation to council in probably the first quarter of 2026, um, you know, that does make some amendments to both of those programs, um, you know, to, you know, again, kind of be responsive to what we've heard from the public and from a lot of the nonprofits that work in these spaces, um, you know, relative to how the city can better allow for greater stewardship of, you know, the vacant properties that we have and the vacant hillsides that we have, uh, here in the city.
Okay, thank you. I would simply ask that prior to submitting the legislation, that you present that legislation to council members or at least to myself anyway, as, as you're well aware, I have two Adopt a Lot programs that are probably grown beyond the intention of the Adopt a Lot. And so figuring out how to address those sort of situations become rather important. Um, so I would just really be interested in seeing the legislation prior to actually hitting the table.
Absolutely. We can definitely do that with you and with all other council members as a part of, you know, whether that's a part of the monthly meetings that we have with council or, or otherwise.
Okay, thank you. That was all for me, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. We'll go to Councilperson Strasburg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all. I, um, I, well, I want to thank you for being here today. I want to thank you for the work that you do and having tuned in online, but not actually participating in the conversation about the comprehensive plan. I just, I wanted to say a couple of things there. I don't really have a question, but I have, have been and continue to support the comprehensive plan and, um, want to defend a little bit the work that you've done because as far as my office is concerned, you've been communicative and you've been helpful in talking through what the future of engagement could look like. That said, I do agree with some of my colleagues that with the time that we have left, more engagement in the, more effort to work with all council members, with the engagement team, even through this sort of mayoral transition, um, to find those who aren't typically engaged in government is going to be really, really, really important because as I was, I was talking to Councilperson Charland yesterday and he pointed out, which I've sort of, you know, agreed this whole time is, is it's less about the final product, like the final product's important, but it's so much more about how people feel, how residents feel about the final product, right? And if they see that they have been a part of it. And, um, those who are fully engaged, like some leaders of the neighborhoods I represent, feel very much as if they're a part of it and they see themselves in it, but it's probably uneven within each neighborhood. So I'm certainly willing to continue to work with your team to, um, to find those opportunities and to, I mean, I thought it was a brilliant idea just to pull, pull together 30 or 90 or however many we can pull off, community meetings together and each part of the city and go canvas or whatever it takes to just engage the folks to make sure that every single person gets a touch or at the very least, what was it? 10% of the city, right? Gets a touch, um, even more than we've been able to, to accomplish thus far. So, you know, um, maybe it's, it's more deep canvassing than it is just a simple touch. But, um, I, I also agree with, with, with my colleague, um, Councilperson Charland that we are, we are unfortunately in a position where council is facing a budget that is, I believe, I have a different message than what was communicated at the mayor's budget address. And it's no fault of any one department, right? You all have been operating under austerity for the last couple of years and I commend you for that. I can see where you've, where you've made the cuts, but, and where you've, where you've been bringing money in. And it's my belief that we are operating under a structural deficit as a city. And we are going to have to make as council members really, really hard choices. And that's where I would agree with Councilperson Charland that we, we, we will be in maybe glad that he brought it up, but I think we have to huddle ourselves to figure out exactly what we're asking from you and what, you know, what we are expecting, um, back in terms of, you know, 6.9% increase from, um, previous year. Okay. Where can we actually, you know, whether it's a three or four or five percent, you know, cut for 2026, where can that be made? But I think we need to do the math first and we need to do the work first to see what our expectation is and then, and then set that, that clear expectation for you. Unfortunately, again, um, no one wants this, but that's where we are. Because I see the value in, you know, what, um, you know, all the different facets of, of the department. I mean, I, I meet with Flor on a monthly basis, you know, I've been working with Kevin on the, um, you know, historic guidelines in two different parts of my district, zoning development review. I mean, we've had so many different conversations, strategic planning and comprehensive, um, planning. And our, our, our neighborhood planner certainly has done the work and it's been really impressive to see the Oakland plan come to fruition through the rezoning work of our Oakland planner. So like I don't have bad things to say about the department, but we have to figure out a way across the city to, to rein it in a little bit more. The last thing I just wanted to say is in terms of communication, um, I, I don't have any easy answers, but I do think that we are, you know, we as a city always as public servants always earn the respect of the public in just tiny little increments. We know that, right? Like every little opportunity to deal with the public is one opportunity to earn or lose trust. And what I would like to see, and I'll be, I'm actually working on legislation to authorize and direct every department to put together a standardized and very clear organizational chart that is updated on a frequent basis with your photo next to it, with a phone number. If it's can't be your phone number, what is the phone number that people can call? Because people need to be able to access every single department to then feel as if they have a, um, a way to interact, a way to have their voice heard and, you know, to earn that trust. So I think that's just one small way that we can, um, continue to build the public trust and the communication and know even just for ourselves and our staff where to go when we have a question or a problem or just that, that, the lines of communication. I'll end by saying, you know, Director Bay, you, you and I are very well aware of the one water model. And that's back, turning it back to the comp plan. That's what I see the value in the comprehensive plan. Like we are siloed as a city and we do need to be bringing together our climate action plan with the transit plan from PRT and, you know, our, our DOMI mobility plan. And, um, I do see value in that, that final, that final result as well. I do think that for some of these decisions, the decision to engage with a county comprehensive plan or a, um, you know, authority or board plan or a transit plan outside of our jurisdiction does need to happen a little bit above all of our pay grades. Like those are executive decisions that need to happen that can't just be unilaterally done by a department. But, um, so I hope that that can happen more, but, um, but I do see, I do see the value and I would hope that the final, the final plan, um, brings clarity not only into how we can have more cross pollination, but what the roles are. Are we going back to the Mayor Murphy model where every community planner is really the community engagement person as well? Or do we have a role for the community planners distinct from the role of the community engagement staff from the mayor's office? What does that look like? I think we have to, you know, drill down that far, um, as well in the future. So, um, lots of decisions to come, but, um, yeah, the good and the bad. Wanted to be straight about it and I appreciate your work and appreciate you being here today. Thank you. And feel free, if there's anything that you really want to, burning, burning, things you want to respond to, I realized didn't actually ask any questions, but, but happy to hear. And if not, that's also fine.
Can we just clarify? Thank you, by the way. But can we just clarify the 6.9%? And please correct me if I'm wrong, budget faults, but my understanding is that setting aside any cost of living increase, that's really just a transfer of two positions that already exist that are filled, uh, with employees currently. And with the getting rid of building eye, we're actually at decrease in our budget. Is that right? Yeah.
And there's, and the only, the only project that we have that's either capital or operating is what we had presented, which is the percent for art, which is legally mandated by code. So there aren't any other, you know, kind of funding, either operating or capital that are coming for project, from a project basis that are coming to the department.
Understood. Yep, thank you.
All right, one's gone, twice, all good. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we were, Molly? Yeah, we, we already went through everyone that was here.
I don't really have anything. I think that we've been discussing all the issues and all the concerns and I just want to say I do appreciate that you're always in a very difficult situation because it's almost like we're always at odds over, you know, things. But I do appreciate the conversations that we all have and working through it all. And I know it's, there's a lot of tension, especially right now with the transition and everything. And I think that, um, I hope that we get to a better place with city planning and city council working more collaboratively. But I think it's just the nature of the job. You report to the administration, you're hired by the administration. So it's just, I think it's that natural, you know, um, challenge sometimes. But I think it would be great to have an administration that wants city planning to also work with city council. I think that would be really helpful. And so I hope that's what you do moving forward. I won't be here, but I'll sit back and watch. And I keep telling everybody I'm going to come down twice a week, every week, I'm going to be the new Ms. Brown. So, but anyways, I have nothing really to say today other than thank you for your work and I appreciate the conversation we had yesterday too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cal Smith. Thanks for joining and I did have a couple of questions. They pertain to the budget. So those, those two positions are not in the, they're not late, they're not here as, like their titles aren't here for me to read, right? Let's just, can we go over the titles again?
Uh, yes. Uh, the one title is policy and planning analyst. And then the other title is digital engagement coordinator.
Is that the same title they have in OMB?
That is the same title, yes. It's carried over from their existing positions and there are people that are in those positions presently.
And what would be the, um, what would be the reason why the transfer happened this budget year instead of like two years ago?
We requested the analyst last year and that position was not filled. And in previous years, from my knowledge, we had an engagement communications persons in the department that we didn't have. And so when the mayor reorganized, those communication people were pulled out of the department. So that's my understanding of the history.
That's correct. There was, there was a position that was similar to this that was doing EngagePGH work. Um, you know, it was when, when communications were kind of consolidated, the mayor's office, that position was moved there at that point in time. Um, and then like I said, with the policy and planning analyst, that's doing the data work that was the position that we had requested in previous years and was listed as kind of a top priority for additional capacity at city planning in our strategic plan.
They were moved under this administration or the previous administration?
Uh, the communications, you know, and engage work, uh, that was under this administration. It was in the department previously.
And then it moved.
And consolidated as a part of, you know, moves to consolidate communications in the mayor's office. And that would be, you know, moving a position back into planning.
All right, thanks. We, we heard from the, the mayor that there was old positions that were, they've been out there for some time and those are being removed. Uh, I guess that means that, uh, you know, those funds that would, that could, you know, potentially fund those positions are moving into the operating fund? Is that what? So in the budget address, the mayor's budget address, there was stated that, um, you know, all the opens, I don't know, maybe he said all or what the language was, but he got that microphone, that, uh, you know, positions that are, you know, unfilled will not be filled. And that money I assume is going to go into the.
Yeah. So if it was, if there were vacant positions that were funded through the general fund, all the ones, I think we, we highlighted yesterday in our overview that there was, is either 42 or 48 positions that were eliminated from the budget. Those were all vacant positions in the general fund. So it's, we, it's just less money that we're spending out of it.
Yeah. Does the.
And sorry for not having the positions listed. We, we, I neglected to reach out to OMB to go over which positions are swaps and which ones are actually moving from one department to another and which ones might actually and which ones are actually moving from one department to another and which ones might actually be new, but we will have those going forward for you.
Are you aware, are you aware of the, any positions in city plan that are, you know, have been open that now are closed and are now factored into this new budget configuration?
Uh, no, there's, the positions, I mean, you know, we are staffed. Um, you know, there were, there were no long-term vacant positions.
There were no long-term, do you have any vacant positions?
Um, we have one position which we recently had an offer out on that is still unfilled, yes. Uh, that's a development review planner position, um, which, like I said, we, we, uh, we, we recently put an offer out, uh, you know, for that position. They have come back and said that they, uh, you know, they, they've turned down that offer. So we're, we're actively trying to fill that one position, um, we, you know, presently. Um, but outside of that, there are no vacancies in the department.
Okay.
And that, that is a vacancy that was created by, you know, uh, an opportunity for promotion for another staff.
Okay. All right, thanks. Are there any other comments from members? Then I don't see any reason to recess. We're just going to move right into PLI. So let's, unless others have concerns. Thanks for coming. Oh, and, uh, just, uh, you know, to round this out, uh, I hear sustainability will be sent in the email of the slides and Dash will be sent, you'll be, you'll be. And you'll be sending the paper copy.
We can do that.
That was my, that was my joke.
We have it digitally though that we've sent to you all.
That was my joke, yeah.
I got it. I got it. I thought that was funny. Sustainability is going to print stuff. I got it.
No, they're not going to print stuff. They're going to email. Yeah, everyone else is going to print the same.
Flor is trying.
Yeah, right. No signos there. It's not your best work. Yeah. It's not, it's not your worst joke, but it's not your best joke. Not your best work.
Let's see how I do on this one.
Do I have a presentation? I do and I have copies for you.
I neglected to ask everyone at city planning if they had their water bottle ready. Um, I didn't see as many water bottles, but you, you all look more prepared with your water.
This is our copy.
I'm just a camel, so.
Okay. All right, well, let's, uh, let's get this started. So we didn't go into recess for the public. Sometimes we do. And, uh, so I'm Bobby Wilson, if you're just tuning in now, or if you're, or if you're hitting rewind, you know, in the future. Uh, I'm the chair of the, of the Land Use and Economic Development Committee and I represent District One. And we had just finished with city planning for a budget hearing. And now we're on permits, licenses and inspections, often referred to PLI. And so typically how this runs, um, like I said, since I've been here, we, we listen to the, our, um, Budget Director, Peter McDevitt. And then we will turn it over to PLI. And I understand you have a presentation.
Yep.
PLI tracks a lot of data, so we are interested in that data. And then we will, uh, turn it over to council members, but I just want to recognize that, uh, online, we are joined by.
Nobody.
No one at this time. Uh, and then, uh, we have Councilperson Strasburger, Cal Smith, Charlin and Councilperson Warwick. So thank you for joining. And Peter, if you could kick this off for us.
Absolutely. The Department of Permits, Licenses and Inspections mission is to improve residents' quality of life by increasing the safety of the built environment. Uh, the Department of PLI is separated into the following divisions. The Construction Division, Code Enforcement Division, Licensing and Administration, and the Systems Operations Division. There are a total of 120 full-time positions in the 2026 budget. That is the same as last year. And a quick review of non-personnel changes. Overall, there is a $380,900 decrease in non-personnel items. There's a decrease of a little over $200,000 for professional and technical services. Some of that is for workforce training, for certification for inspectors, a decrease in $20,000 for the building eye software and a decrease of just over $143,000 in professional services for lead lab services, erosion and sediment control enforcement. There is also an additional $172,300, $172,300 decrease in operational supplies. And then in the capital budget, uh, we talked about this a little bit yesterday. There is a little over a million dollars in Pago funding for demolition of structures for geotechnical consulting. There's $80,000 for that and the million for deconstruction of dangerous buildings. And another $2,065,000 for demolition of structures in CDBG funding. PLI also has access to the following trust funds, the Code Trust Fund, the Demolition Trust Fund, PLI Record Storage Technology and Operations Trust Fund, and the One Stop PGH Permitting Technology Trust Fund. And they also have a robust list of fees, uh, listed there for you. And that's all I have.
Thank you, uh, Peter. And I will turn it over to you, Director Green.
Okay, uh, I think, uh, first introduce ourselves. I'm David Green. I'm the Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses and Inspection.
Hello, Alyssa Hanasek, just recently married, sorry, last name changed. Uh, I'm the Assistant Director of the Construction Division at PLI.
Monica Bender, Assistant Director of Licensing and Administration at PLI.
Neil Gerbeck, Assistant Director of Systems Operations at PLI.
Rob Columbus.
You guys turn on.
Rob Columbus, Assistant Director of Code Enforcement for PLI.
So, uh, we're going to go over a quick intro, some items about the budget, talk about our performance and then wrap up with our accomplishments for the last year and our goals for next year. So, quick overview, uh, I won't add much. I think Peter talked to most of this. Just highlight what we regulate. So we regulate development and occupancy based on Title IX and Title X. Title IX, we are the enforcement arm for the Department of City Planning for the zoning code. We also regulate business and trade licenses under Title VII and then building and property maintenance under Title X. So in terms of the operating budget, we have three positions. Uh, these are all budget neutral. The first position, the Neighborhood Engagement Coordinator, is a transferred position, uh, from the Neighborhood Services Team. And this is intended to be a comparable to the previous government liaison position that we had uh, right around the pandemics. So the thought with this is to allow us to have more capacity to reach out to communities and engage them and then also connect with your offices, make sure that we are uh, answering inquiries and connecting people as they need. The other two are swaps for existing positions within our department. So the Systems Operations Supervisor adds a, uh, new supervisor position in the Systems Operations Division. This is really critical for the organization to ensure that, that long-term stability. So looking five to 10 years down the road, if we don't have that middle management position, it really puts a stress on the organization. We need that there. That team does important work. Uh, started out with the One Stop PGH system and is expanding from that. Uh, there are a couple of position swaps. This is, looked to be a promotional opportunity from uh, a performance analyst position within PLI. And then lastly, Associate Project Manager. And this is a position that is intended to add redundancy and perform the primary contracting work for the remediation of condemned buildings. So currently, uh, uh, Rob in his new role is, uh, handling that work. Prior to that, uh, he served as a specialized supervisor within the division, which created a silo, uh, looking to try to have more uniform positions across the department and then look to uh, allow, uh, Rob and anyone in the future who holds that position be able to focus on higher level items, uh, pushing for strategic code enforcement and, uh, allowing a, a different staff level really manage the administrative burden or work, I should say, associated with that program. And then also highlight that PLI identified over $300,000 of savings that helped balance the budget. So, uh, the operational budget, uh, absent the Neighborhood Engagement Coordinator would have actually been a, uh, net decrease. Uh, thanks to, uh, those savings that we identified and were incorporated by OMB. Uh, in terms of the capital budget, uh, Peter already talked to the funding levels for the CDBG and Pago or Pay As You Go. Uh, we estimate that the funds would allow us to demolish 35 to 40 planned demolitions and 15 to 20 emergency demolitions. Uh, also in the capital budget, uh, equipment acquisition, there is funding for a all-wheel-drive sedan. And this is, uh, intended to support our 24-hour response to emergency incidents. Currently, our on-call staff, uh, utilize a standard sedan and oftentimes, uh, are looking to assist public safety to assess a landslide, building collapse, structure fire. These happen in the middle of winter. If you don't have all-wheel drive, uh, we can't respond and help, uh, to assess that situation and, uh, guide the process and take any measures that we may need to.
You have an Outback now?
No.
What's, what's an all-wheel-drive sedan? Oh, like what's the, um, what's the brand? Oh, interesting. Cool.
And then a, an update on the, uh, 2025 capital budget, uh, just to manage expectations. The 2025 CDBG funds are not yet available to us. So, uh, really want to acknowledge and be upfront about that for you guys as well as constituents so they understand that there is a cycle and a difference between when a budget is approved and when we can actually spend that money. In terms of, uh, I think there's a typo here, apologies. Eighty-five, eighty-seven percent of the 2024 CDBG funds have been encumbered. And then 34% of the 2025 Pago funds have been encumbered. Uh, Pago includes about a Hillsborough 701? Hillsborough, is that the right address, Rob? And, uh, that costs around $148,000, just for reference. So going to move into, uh, some performance data and some of these I'm going to go pretty quickly. You guys have copies. We can go back to these if you have questions. So this first slide is showing, um, the number of issued permits, uh, over the last five years and, uh, both residential, commercial in total. And then a map showing, uh, the concentration of issued permits over the last 12 months. And when I use the term last 12 months in this presentation, it's from, uh, November of last year, first to end of October, uh, this year. Uh, and then this highlights, uh, the value of construction for all those permits that were issued on the previous slide. Last year, we hit a high watermark of $1.6 billion worth of, uh, construction. We're projecting that we will hit 1.5, uh, by the end of the year based on, uh, permits that we've issued through the end of October. Uh, and then this shows the concentration of the value of construction across the city. Uh, and then want to talk a little bit about, uh, some key aspects. So first, uh, in terms of development, how, uh, we're working to shorten the process. Um, so want to highlight two, uh, related points that many people may not be aware of. Uh, looking over the last five years, uh, 22% of commercial permits and 40% of uh, residential permits did not require PLI review. So, uh, we would anecdotally call that an over-the-counter permit. So those can be issued as soon as, uh, the person applying for it identifies who's performing the work and they pay the remaining fees. Uh, we've also seen a decrease in the average time for each review. Uh, and that's between 2020 and, uh, 2025, uh, periods. So a 22% decrease in the average time for a review of commercial permits and a 31% decrease in the average for residential. And then over the last 12 months, uh, we're reviewing commercial permits 53% faster than our published SLAs and then reviewing residential 65% faster than our published SLA. Want to talk a little bit now about recent code enforcement. So this shows the, uh, this slide shows the total number of cases over the last 12 months and then the breakdown in terms of stages. So, uh, about a third, uh, of the cases, uh, that we received complaints or initiated ourselves. Uh, we were not able to confirm evidence of a violation. And then, uh, beyond that, about equal proportion are in pre-court process, uh, or court process. And then there's a miscellaneous category for cases that don't have a standard process, such as clean and lean, uh, and some other, uh, categories. And then providing a little bit of detail in terms of the status for code enforcement for the pre-court and court. So you can see, uh, by this slide that 77% of the pre-court were resolved and 23 are still in process. Uh, and then in the court, um, uh, 37 of those were resolved, so the violation was, uh, abated. And then 41% uh, are still in process. And then you see, uh, a smaller percentage of where there were determinations by the judge. And you can see the proportion, uh, of that in terms of the overall number of cases that proceed to court. And then the next slide is showing, uh, our condemned, uh, property distribution across the city. And then the pie chart is showing the distribution of our scores, uh, from one to four. Four is the most hazardous. Uh, and that is, uh, less than 1% and the majority of the properties, condemned properties that we have assessed, they are, uh, a number two. And then customer service, uh, want to talk about, uh, the shift in how customers engage with us. So pre-pandemic, approximately 39% of our customers were solely in person. Um, over the last 12 months, that's been 3%. Uh, over the last 12 months in terms of in-person service, excuse me, there were over 2,700 customers and that was split, uh, a little more towards development than license. Uh, average wait time was four minutes, uh, and then the average service time was 24 minutes. Uh, and then electronic, uh, service, uh, we have a chat feature, uh, which is one of our more popular services. If you ask our regular customers, uh, and those were, uh, just shy of 19,000 over the last 12 months. And that equals an average of 70, 75 each day.
Thank you, Director Green. I wanted to take a little bit of time to review some overall performance data in the respect to the last 12 months. For development as a whole, um, we're looking at 11,360 applications that were submitted and verified into the development review process. 14,295 reviews were performed, so those are plan reviews performed by PLI, 71% of which were commercial and 29% which were residential. Um, as far as inspections go, staff was really busy and working hard to perform 28,484 inspections, 49% of which were commercial and 51% of which were residential.
Thank you, Alyssa. Um, over the past 12 months, um, our enforcement team has performed 48,986 inspections and they resulted in 46,892 notices being mailed out. Assistant Director Bender's team is, um, tasked with, um, mailing all of these notices out for PLI, DOMI and for, um, environmental services. and for environmental services that fall under DPW. We also performed 6,816 periodic inspections. What a periodic inspection is, we call it a program inspection. It's, so for instance, condemned properties, we are tasked with inspecting on an annual basis the condemned property inventory and updating the scores and determining whether they, they meet the criteria for demolition. We've also, which leads us right into, we performed 58 city-funded demolitions. That is all I have for the slide.
Thanks, Rob. So as Director Green mentioned earlier, we receive our authority from Title VII within the city code. And that title provides PLI the authority to regulate specific business licenses. Those licenses are comprised of general and signed contractor licenses, trade licenses, business licenses, and also the rental registry program. Over the last 12 months, PLI application technicians completed 6,884 submission reviews to confirm that those applicants included all of the requirements necessary for their submission. Although the rental registry program remains voluntary at this time, PLI has issued 701 provisional permits, so that's prior to inspections, and 361 non-provisional permits, which are the final issued permits for just over 1,600 dwelling or sleeping units within the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Monica. Systems Operations Division is the newest division within PLI. We are a team of software developers and data analysts. Previously with One Stop PGH, which is our main software, we were paying the vendor to perform all enhancements. We have since become fully enabled on the vendor's backend proprietary software and we're trying to bridge that gap and take over as much development as possible. So we're not paying the vendor. If I had to put a number on it, I'd say we developed about 60% of all enhancements for, and the vendor did about 40% this past year. That included 100 One Stop PGH bug fixes and enhancements that we have gone live with to date. Simultaneously, we do have the capacity to work on large-scale projects. So in 2024, we launched a brand-new customer portal interface for One Stop PGH. We created the Building and Development Application, or the BDA, where we combined the two main permits from PLI, our building permit, and zoning, their ZDR, into one application to try to cut down the number of touchpoints that the customer has with One Stop PGH. We also launched rental registration about 11 months ago and we worked on DOME utility improvements this year as well. So we are doing backend development for all One Stop PGH agencies, not just PLI. If I could just state that 2024 was large-scale projects where we were changing the core concepts of the system. 2025 has been maintaining the system and pushing updates consistently. Hopefully in 2026, we're able to do both, work on projects and maintain the system simultaneously.
Thanks, Neil. So overview, high-level 2025 accomplishments, programs and regulations. We spoke to it earlier. We launched the rental registry program end of last year. We also adopted the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code around that time and in process the vending regulation updates. In terms of resources, we opened a counter, One Stop Counter at 412 Boulevard of the Allies almost a year ago. So we've had almost a year of in-person services for our residents. For the first time since the pandemic, I think we closed March 19th of 2020. So really glad to have that service back for our customers. One Stop Insights launched. This is transparent interface so that anyone, any member of the public can access 24 hours a day. It has development applications, code enforcement, DOME permits on it. And this replaces a product that was produced by an outside vendor and now developed internally through the Department of Innovation and Performance with strong support from Neil's team. So this highlights the type of work that this new division can help support, reduce operational expenses and increase efficiency. We also launched formal training for our supervisors on the One Stop PGH portal. This has helped supported last budget. We had two training positions and as you can imagine, with 120 people, with most needing certifications, some up to 12 or more, supporting that certification and ensuring formal training is really critical. So prior to this, it was, here's your book, here you go. And similarly, supervisors who need to support staff were presented with the software that we use and refer to as One Stop PGH. We're looking to create a groundwork or a foundation for our supervisors so that they can support staff and that we can then ultimately support customers better. In terms of operation, spoke to earlier Neil in his appointment as Assistant Director, launching that division. And my expectation for this is that up-to-date, primarily focused on technological improvements, but looking at other systems in general. So for example, the 48,000 notices. What are the logistics of the generating of those notices? How do we print those notices? How do we get them from 412 Boulevard of the Allies to the city county building, et cetera? So look at those type of systems and see how we can make them more efficient and serve the needs of staff that are involved as well as customers. And then other operations accomplishments. We're in the process of evaluating the BDA as an opportunity for continuous process improvement. This is from my perspective, I've been with the city since 2012, really unique project, the BDA, in that it brought true collaboration and partnership across the agencies, PLI, DCP and DOME. And moving from initiating that to getting feedback from staff as well as customers to understand, did it work and how can we continue to improve it? And then our goals and one update for next year. Operational goal and highlight this for Councilman Charland. We are looking to experiment with different inspection staff schedules to increase operational efficiency and expand services. So right now, we have vacant inspector positions and not enough cars for there to be a one-to-one inspector to car ratio. So we are in the process of looking at schedule changes so that we can share vehicles and then meet a desired need from Councilman Charland as well as the rest of the members at the table and the public. So looking forward to that and we'll keep you updated as we work through that process. Look to launch a position that was approved in the 2025 budget, the Combined Maintenance Inspector Position. And this creates one unified inspector position under Rob so that they perform all of the inspections that that division perform. Increase in house development for the One Stop PGA system, Neil spoke to that earlier. As we gain the capacity and leverage the internal expertise, we reduce the reliance on the vendor and reduce our operational expenses. It also, having someone within a department allows for more innovation. There's more interactions, a better understanding of how we operate. And this is truly a shared resource and shared work. There are other partners in city planning and doming who help support as well as innovation and performance. So while we do a majority of the work, we're also supported by those other departments. In terms of programs, we're looking to launch a virtual inspection program, launch vending program update and then full rental registry enforcement. In terms of regulations, this is update. The 2021 International Code Council ICC codes will be adopted by the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code early next year. We will update our bulletin on our webpage to provide guidance to our customers, but taking this opportunity so folks are understanding that that change is coming. Hoping to reevaluate trade license regulations and then potentially amend Title 10 and update rules and regs. Title 10, specifically Chapter 1002, has not been significantly updated since it was passed in 2003. So ripe for looking back at it and seeing how can it fit the needs of the city today. And hopefully I didn't bore you guys too much and look forward to your questions. Thank you for having us. I do.
I appreciate that and thanks for coming on the table and talking about everything you do. I know most days, PLI is, is, you know, it must be a challenge. We hear a lot about PLI, you know, being elected officials. I don't know. I guess I shouldn't speak for everyone, but.
All good things, right?
Well, that's what I'm talking about. It's a, you know, that's why I mentioned what the acronym is because you could fly under the radar if I say permits, license and inspections. But everyone knows what PLI is. But thank you for your presentation and thanks for the work you do because I know that you're not always thanked on the work that you do. And thanks for keeping Councilperson Charlin happy.
Let's not go crazy.
You got a shout-out. You got a shout-out. See that? Or satisfied? All right. So we're going to hand it over to the members here. And, you know, some of you may still be gathering some questions if not, but I'm going to just take whoever feels like they want to go first. Let's. All right. Yeah, Councilperson Warmer.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for being here. Just to kind of, just sort of, you know, for sort of like the big buckets. I will say for enforcement, I mean, in my district, I, I've been very pleased, I have to say. I mean, we don't see everything, right? But when something does, you know, when someone does write or get it, it's, the result seems quick, at least in my experience, right? Like the, and oftentimes, and the one thing I really do appreciate in particular is when someone has an issue that can't necessarily be seen from the right-of-way. That's, those are the ones that I kind of interact with the most. It's been a very, it seems like, like someone has gotten out quite quickly, got in touch with the person and been able to come in, you know, and I have not gotten a lot of, again, I can't speak for my staff, there's more of me personally. I've not gotten a lot of like, no, no, nobody came. I never heard from anybody. So that, that's always nice. For the permitting, you know, so I've been here about three years. I will say there have been fewer. I've gotten fewer sort of, you know, calls from folks about, about, you know, oh, my permit, it's taking a long time. One thing that I have noticed, I think on maybe smaller, you know, smaller projects, where it does seem to be, you know, when someone has called me and then I've caught, you know, and said, hey, what's going on with this? That sometimes maybe it is an issue with the contractor, right? It seems like most of the time, it's actually like the, you know, the issue is on the side of the, right? That it's their, it's their job to get back to you guys, but that hasn't been communicated to the, the property owner, right? And maybe in those cases, especially if it's, if it's a contractor that you all are familiar with, you know, just a call to the, to the property owner, just like a one-on-one, just to say, hey, look, you know, this is kind of overall, just so that they understand as well. And then maybe they, because I understand you can't have sort of a talking to with their contractor, but they can, right? And I think that that would be helpful in those cases to allow them to be like, hey, you know, I'm paying you to do something and I need you to get back to, get back to, to PLI. For demo, so we, yeah, we've talked about this. So, so, so what was the number, 50 or so? 58, that is how much you, you can complete with the budget for this coming year?
No, 58 was the number that we completed over the last 12 months and that actually comes from previous budget cycles.
Got it. So what, how, with, with, with what you've got now in the budget, how many demos do you think, I mean, I know it's a rough, but.
Yeah, so that's included on, I think, your slide five. It doesn't have slide numbers. Under the capital budget, anticipate that 35 to 40 planned demos and then 15 to 20 emergency demos.
Okay, and?
So, and those correspond planned, we use CDBG funding. PEGO, we use for emergencies because the process to encumber and spend the money is nearly instantaneous versus CDBG, which can last from three, three to six months.
Got it. And if you had all the money in the world, how many demos? Like how many, how many structures do we, do need, need to be demoed currently?
I don't have that. I can put a general scale. If you go to the condemned property map slide, there are, I believe, round numbers, 1,800 and 1,900 condemned properties. And that you see that 10, just shy of 11% are numbered, scored a three. And I think threes and fours are the most ripe for needing demolition. I think one of the aspects that I would anticipate if the Associate Project Manager position is included in 2026, that this can allow, free up time for Rob. So can look at the demo process and look to see how we can be more on top of that question that you're asking and be, Rob and I have been working to try to be as transparent and clear in what we're doing. And we're working on some of those standards and hopefully you'll recognize in those in the near future. But right now, what we have is a relative hazard of those condemned properties. And if I was estimating, I'd say it would be that 10%, maybe more.
And these are city-owned and privately owned?
Yes.
Okay. So my understanding is that you asked for nine, like, so you asked for nine million or something like that, right?
Yeah, so we took a different strategy and we were looking at if we could have a bigger chunk of money now and tackle a larger volume that over time, that budget would decrease. Recognize that given the financial circumstances that the city is facing, I don't know that that is necessarily realistic for the reality, but I think there's an argument for the more money we can put into this, that we can make progress. I think it's fair to say we are tackling the worst right now and we're not getting to the, the ones that should also be demolished and are waiting for something to happen for us to act. So I would say we can, this is comparable to last year, maybe about a million dollars less, plus or minus. And to me, that's, I'd just generally say status quo.
And for the ones and twos, do those, do those, could those be rehabilitated? Like, are those like potential land bank?
Yes, likely, I guess theoretically, any of them can. Ones typically are going to be a unfit issue. So there's no water, no sewer, no electricity. So those are pretty easily remedied. And then twos start to encounter some obvious issues and most of those likely can be rehabilitated. It's the property owners having the resources to do so. So I think. do so. So I think as a city, we need to collaborate on how to address the large population of buildings that have not been maintained and that mismatch between the resources of the existing property owners and the resources of the city. So while I appreciate the funding for demolition, we're not going to demolish our way out of this issue. And we need to be thoughtful about other solutions, including rehabilitation of property and find a mechanism for that process so that we can prevent something that is in, not fit, from coming to something that collapses in the street, and then we have to spend tax payer money to remove, and then we lose that building, that generational wealth, et cetera.
Okay, I guess, I, I mean, it would be helpful, I know it would be helpful for me to have, like, a list of, you know, the ones, the twos, the threes, the fours, and then, and I know that I've sent a list, right, of sort of like my, but I don't know what all the, I mean, I'm just basing that on, on.
We can give you that.
What I see and like.
It's also available on one-stop PTH insights, but if, happy to provide either full list or curated lists to any council member or any community partners. We're very transparent and open about our data. It can only lead to good outcomes. If you guys are looking at other strategies, it can help us so that we lose less buildings and we repair communities.
Yeah, I mean, because I know, like, there's, I mean, there's a number of buildings where it's just like they're just ablite, right? Like, on the, just straight up blight. And I don't, I mean, given the fact that there are other buildings that are kind of like in the middle, there's no way that those, the really bad ones are anything but teardowns, right? Given how many that are in better shape. Like, if the land bank were going to come in and pick whatever, 10 properties to do in a year, right? Like, I guess, maybe a better question than like, how many are there, an actual number, is how many, if, well, let's just say, if, if PLI had five, say, $5 million to do demos, could you spend that down in a year?
I think it's fair to say that, yes, $5 million, we could spend down.
Like, if we were maxing out on, and I mean, like, capacity, I don't know, we do contractors, we do it ourselves, I don't know, if we were maxed out at capacity to just be tearing down, you know, wretched properties, how much money could you guys spend down in a year?
The average over the last, I want to, I don't have the numbers in front of me. My recollection is the budget for this capital program started hovering around $4 million for the last five years, plus or minus. So I think we've maintained that with essentially one person. I think it's fair to say we could likely double that. Or what are your thoughts, Rob?
In 2023, with our backlog, CDBG funding, our discretionary funding, and the ARPA funding that was granted to us, we spent over $10 million on over 130 structures.
And again, was that like, were you max, I mean, I mean, capacity, like, like, you have your contractors that you use, you have yourselves, you have?
I think we have a pool of pre-qualified contractors. I don't think getting like eight or $10 million would max them out. And if we have the associate project manager position, I think the contracting is such that we can, we can handle that capacity. I think if you were talking, I would have concerns if you start talking like $20 million. We might have a different discussion, but.
We're not talking $20 million.
I don't think we're talking that. So I, I think I can safely say, whatever money you give us, we have a history of encumbering it and spending it down as quickly as we can.
Okay, okay. I mean, because that, that feels like for, for, that is one of the biggest things, right, are the vacant event. And the other, so, okay, so, that's just for understanding. And the other thing is the clean and lean, and I know that this is a DPW conversation. Just so I'm clear, so, so on your end with the clean and leans, like, you come, there's a property, it's, it's in violation. So what's the process on your end? And then, you know, before it gets passed over to DPW, like, it's like, okay, this one, like, because I'd like to see, like, this whole process with the magistrate, where it's like, oh, it's at the magistrate, that, that is a frustrating process. And I would like to see us be able to just come in, get it cleaned up, whatever, lean the property. So how does that look on your end?
So our property maintenance regulations indicate that we can issue citation for someone for either, clean and lean is used for two broad purposes. One is to secure vacant buildings, so boarding as normally talked about anecdotally, and then clean, so removing overgrowth or debris from the exterior of a structure. And both of those issues can be addressed by issuing a citation when the owner fails to remediate within the timeframe given to them, we can take action. So it, there is a slightly different process, and Rob may defer to you. We typically do not send routing of city-owned or 3T properties or routed in a different fashion for where there's weeds and debris, and primarily clean and lean is used for privately owned. I believe for boardups, we're doing both sets of properties, looking down the table to make sure I'm not over my skis or giving you bad info. So we make a citation, we see failure when we record an outcome in our one-stop system that sends a work order to the Department of Public Works and their Cartograph System, and then they add that to their work plan and schedule accordingly.
So, and what is that timeline? So from the first citation, how much time do they have to, to, you know, remedy?
We, debris, do you know, offhand? Sorry.
I'm sorry, to repeat the question you asked, how, how much time does a private citizen have to remedy a situation?
Yeah, from like first citation. So there's a, there's a building with overgrowth and whatever, broken windows, it gets cited.
Well, those are two different types of case files. So for a broken window or something like that, a basic property maintenance violation, it, it's three inspections separated between 30 days. As far as the weeds and debris, it's seven to 15, three inspections with, with seven to 15 days separating, depending on the violation.
So that's what I'm, okay, so, so three inspections, what does that mean?
So the first inspection is the initial inspection. So whether that's the inspector noticing it and doing what we call a pickup, or if they are answering a complaint, that's the first inspection.
Okay.
And let's say it is the 30-day denomination, 30 days go by, and if we don't hear from the owner, we go, the inspector is triggered through our Computronics Program to go back out and re-inspect. And that's the second. And then upon the third, we issue the criminal complaint, which summons the magistrate to start the process, to schedule a hearing.
Okay, so can we just get it sent, so I get the magistrate process, but can it get sent over to the clean and lean, like, as soon as possible, like, I guess the second inspection, like, you come out the second time and it's?
We can look at modifying the process. I think some are slightly different. We do have properties that are flagged as what we call dead end, because the owner is either deceased or we have a long history of no service. And when, in those instances, it goes instantaneously to DPW, I think the other opportunity, didn't highlight in the presentation, but we are in the process of transferring the enforcement of weeds and debris from PLI to DPW. So we've been having a fair amount of conversations, and I think there's an opportunity for us to talk about that process. And we had a meeting sometime in the last month to discuss that and look at how the process is working now and how it might be streamlined.
We also send boardups, whether it's privately or publicly owned, on the first inspection right away. So it's the dead end properties for the clean leans go right away, as well as the boardups go right away on the first inspection.
Okay, I won't, I guess I won't like belabor that. So the other thing is, would there be any capacity, again, well, this would maybe be like a, you know, a place where city planning perhaps could, could help, would be, you know, connecting the magistrates with their communities? Because I know that there are issues of some magistrates who are just like lenient, or like the fines are so low, and it's, you know, I've had that a number of times, just so that they can hear from community members? I mean, if that is an issue with a particular magistrate, just to, to kind of, you know, because, I mean, I feel like property owners, for much of the time, if it's, if it's an LLC or it's a rental, which means that there is a landlord that should be taking care of it, you know?
Yeah, I think we have a real opportunity and a desire for our team to connect with the magisterial system, to work on that relationship. And the neighborhood engagement coordinator may help. But I think having the additional capacity for Rob to support his supervisor team and Alyssa and her supervisor team, we recognize and experience the engagement with magistrates, and there's a fair volume of continuances. And the, when defendants are found guilty, the penalties are not necessarily most ideal, particularly if they're not cooperative. So we are open to those discussions. And I think looking at how, how do we effectively engage with this other, what I would call, system? And what are the key points of contact? And how do we collaborate? So right now, it is very much kind of arms-length, and I think we can work to develop better relationships and better understanding both of our regulations, and then have an opportunity to bring in communities so the magistrates can hear from the people impacted by the cases that we're bringing to them.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be helpful, too, because I know that we, you know, it's, again, it's hard for the council, because we do it from the council office, sort of letting people know when the hearing is, or maybe trying to go to the hearing ourselves, which we rarely do. That's just not something we can keep up with, with all the, you know, with just sort of, so I think that, that would be helpful. I don't know, maybe putting something, it feels like something city planning could help with, but I, I don't know, but at least to put together, like, what needs to happen, right? And then maybe we can figure out who, who does that.
Yeah, we can look into that. I think they, recognizing in the moment that they do have expertise in community engagement that we don't, and that could be a fruitful collaboration to have with them.
Yeah. I don't think I have anything else. I guess maybe the one thing I would, so I have not had monthly calls with PLI, but I think maybe, just on the demos, right? Because I, like, there does seem, seem to be, I have, I have a little bit of a tough time with communication, right, with, with PLI. Not, not when I sent, not about like individual things, but maybe just like with yourself, Director, you know? So maybe just like a monthly call where we really are looking at the demos. That's something I do with DOMI and DPW, but of course, there's so many things with DOMI and DPW, there are always, so, so maybe that would be a helpful thing to start doing.
Always open to meeting with any council office at any frequency that you want. We're here to serve you and your residents, so happy to do so. Can reach out anytime, happy to schedule that and let us know what you want to talk about, what frequency and who you want there.
I mean, I know for sure it's like, you know, the Marsden Properties, like, the, you know, the garage on, on Monongahela, like, when, you know, just to know, like, what the status is and when those are going to come down. Because I hear about them a lot, and then it always.
It trickles down.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, well, that's it for me, I think. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I did fail to recognize that we've been joined, you know, for the presentation and these questions by Councilman Gary Mosley. And I did see Councilmember Cal Smith, you had your hand up, you want to go?
Yeah, yes.
All right, you have some questions?
Thank you. Thank you for chairing the meeting. You're doing a great job. And I appreciate it. Director McDevitt, I love the folders and materials you're providing, so thank you. Thank you all for your work. Rob, I didn't even recognize you in a suit, I gotta tell you. I was like, who is that? Anyway, but, so I just want to thank you all for your work. But I do have some questions, mostly about the demo. And I mentioned, you mentioned something about having, did I misunderstand, like, sort of like a nighttime enforcement? Did I misunderstand that?
You, you did not. So we don't, we don't have the details ironed out, but we are looking to experiment with different schedules. So right now, our, we have one work schedule from 7:30 to 4:15, and we're looking to experiment with that because of vehicle shortage. So in order for us to be able to post and fill our vacant inspection positions, we need to come up with a way that they can share. The easiest way is they work different shifts so that they're not using the car at the same time. So I don't have details, but it is something that we're working on earnestly and would hope to be able to report back to council sometime early next year with details, more details in terms of what those schedules might be and how they might affect your neighborhoods.
I, I mean, that was something, actually, Councilman Charlin and I were having a little sidebar, and then you said, I'm thinking, this is what we were just talking about. Because I see it all the time, people just wait until it's after hours to do the things they're going to do without permits. And it's creating a lot of, you know, tension and a lot of angst in the community. So I think that we should have, I mean, if we're going to be a 24-hour city, Bruce Kraus used to say this all the time, if, you know, then we need, you know, a 24-hour staff and enforcement. And so we need, and he was always pushing for a nighttime enforcement office, period, just for everything. So I think that's a really great idea. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that you're thinking about it. So, and I will say the communication is really difficult with all the departments, but especially with PLI. And do you have somebody like the others that's responsible for communicating and doing that kind of stuff?
We do not currently. We have attempted to address some of those things. So we do have a shared director email address that goes to all five of us, do have an executive assistant, most people may not know, and flags things for me. The neighborhood engagement position can potentially help with those things. I will say that it has been difficult as my tenure as director, having to perform more than one role at a time. So before Alyssa was appointed as, well, before I was appointed, serving as acting assistant director for construction, and then similarly, when Mark Mariani, former assistant director, left, that puts a lot of pressure. And that's not to make excuse, just reality. So I think between having this cohort and the positions that are proposed for the next year, but it, 2026 will look a lot different for.
Do you, do you respond to council members directly, or do you just?
Yeah.
Or do you, is it everybody that, you know, contacts you that you?
I try to respond directly to as many people as I can. I will say the volume of correspondence is.
I imagine it's overwhelming, yeah.
Yeah, but I do respond directly. It, timing can be everything, but I do my best to respond to members as well as the public and anyone who's inquiring to our department. But it is room for improvement, for sure.
Well, when I first started, we had NextTells, and you'd NextTell a director, and no matter what time of day or night it was, they answered for a member of council. But I think that was the tone set by Ravenstall administrations, that you're, you know, to work with everyone. And so I think that respect for council, you know, was really something that we all. And so I think that respect for council, you know, was really something that we all benefited from, that what he expected from, you know, from the directors. And over the time I've noticed, you know, having additional people, additional communication people, I actually think it's almost like putting a bubble around the people and the director, the people who should be responding, responding directly to council members. We represent the people and I think the respect for the council members is what I worry about going forward. To make sure that they're also all receiving, it shouldn't matter who somebody supported or didn't support, it should matter that they represent people. And for me, that's the most important part going forward for all the members and I hope they have that in the next, you know, coming years. But they, they would next tell you three o'clock in the, in the, in the, in the morning. I mean, I literally got NextTells at three, if something happened in our district. And I do want to thank you because you called me about the fire on Hillsborough and so I do want to thank you for that, or sent me a text, I think. Yeah, so I want to thank you for that. And so does the public safety director. So I want to thank you both for that. But, and it was sad that somebody did pass away in that fire. But thank you for demoing it without giving the family additional grief and additional, or the community additional stress, because it was a very significant loss to the community. But I, I do want to talk a little bit about the demo and the cost of demos because it went up significantly. It used to be like around what, eight thousand, four thousand, five thousand, something like that. And then the county changed the criteria is my understanding.
Well, there's a couple of factors.
And how you got disposed of the asbestos, which increased the cost.
There are multiple factors. I'll give a general overview and then I'll ask Rob to, to fill in. So there are the standards that we're asking our vendors to perform the work under and those do include asbestos regulations. Everybody is required to, but as a governmental agency, we ensure that they're, they're following those. The, that can add costs. So if the building is not safe enough to survey and remediate the asbestos before demolition, then all the waste from the building has to be treated as containing asbestos. So that adds significant cost and most of the time, I shouldn't say most, a large percentage, particularly emergency demolitions, we are not able to remediate that asbestos beforehand. The second component is legislation that previous council approved lead safe regulations and and that requires measures to mitigate lead risk during demolition and that generally, I believe, involves wetting the construction to mitigate the potential lead dust from spreading. That adds the cost of providing that water and then adds the cost of heavier waste because it's soaked within water before it's transported away. So.
Maybe they just put it in a plastic bag.
And then I, I think the larger global trend, just from the pandemic, all construction has increased. If you look to our issued value of construction last year, 1.6 billion dollars of value of construction. It's not just us. I would say some of our standards are different than a private property owner may perform, but I think it's reality of the construction industry and then the regulations that we've chosen to hold ourselves accountable to.
So since I've been in office, I, I, I do advocate for the demo, but I really try to work with people to renovate the properties. And this last year, Sally Stedelman actually moved some property to the land bank, which I'm thankful for. But still waiting for the money to renovate those properties is, is also an issue. And so I think that, you know, I want to see some of those things happen because they're, they're waiting, the communities are waiting for those things to happen. But I want to, so I, I just have a lot of things in general, just, you know, concerns and frustrations with, you know, the housing. I feel like poor Sheridan has been in Esplan. Esplan needs some attention. They've been struggling for a long time with some properties that, and once they've been on fire, they're supposed to be demoed within, according to code, within 45 days, right? I'm positive.
Take your word for it, if we can follow up in, in terms of the specific ordinance that you're referring to.
But I don't know if it's to our cost or is it to the cost, and that's why I have to look at, I'll look at that. Or whether it's the cost of the property owner, because it just needs, some of them just need torn down. There's a house in Esplan that's been there for years that's been on fire.
So if we want it torn down in a specific time period, it's going to be us and we're going to be paying for it and then.
Cause you can't, you can lean the property, but they're never going to pay it. Is that right?
And the lien would not be repaid until the property is transferred. So we have a fair amount or a concentration of properties that we demolish in neighborhoods where the reality of, or the likelihood of that property reselling and re getting back that lien is pretty marginal. So I think it speaks to the, I guess, council and earlier question, the volume or the number of buildings that need to be demolished. And I think without going to specific numbers, because I can't give you specific answers, we don't have enough money to demolish all the buildings that we should.
Yeah, I hear you. I hear you loud and clear with that. And then I will say that in Esplan fortunately has a retired police officer, he's now somewhere else, I don't know. But he purchased a lot of properties and if he can get them demolished, he's going to build affordable housing. And so I'm going to work with Sally and the land bank on, because I think he could turn Esplan around totally with the plans that he's been doing. He's already started doing some of it. And so it'd be great to see just that investment in the community that really, because it's small, doesn't mean they don't deserve some attention too. So I just want to say that. But I also want to thank you because I think you went through a lot of trouble with some housing in Sheridan on Berry Street. And I'm just going to, I'm going to talk about this publicly because I wasn't going to talk about it, but I want to say it publicly, if you, I hope you don't mind. There was a woman who reported all of us to everybody that she could because she said that we were putting people in a house, that they were from Venezuela and that they, we were doing things illegally and went on and on and that you were part of the property owner and all kinds of things. It ends up you don't even own the property, you own the house behind it, correct? You live up the block.
Correct. I live in the same neighborhood up the block, but I have no affiliation with those properties.
Right. And so she, she had reported us and said all kinds of stuff and that, you know, and they, it became like a whole campaign stuffing it, you know, with my chief of staff was running. And so I, and now that's over, I feel like I can talk freely about it because it was not okay. People said a lot of things. You had nothing to do with that property. The mayor had nothing to do with that property. And they were insinuating that there was a lot going on. And so I just want to make sure that that's clear, that the public knows you had nothing to do with it. They, you made sure all permits were in place. And the same goes for the hotel in Banksville. And that I do know that there was an attorney that got involved and that is all settled and everything's, you know, copacetic there. It's all, everything's illegal and everything's. Okay. I just want to put that out there because people spread a lot of rumors that aren't necessarily true and you know, during a campaign, it's hard to clarify during the time you have a microphone. You don't want to be caught up in the political thing where you're trying to, you know, just work. But I do want to make sure people, the public understands that some of the things that the accusations were not accurate. So, thank you. But I really wanted to apologize to you because you really got dragged in the middle of it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. And then do we have any? Who would like to go next? We had, didn't buy a finger. Charlene raised his finger first. And then Councilman Mosley, feel free to jump in.
Unless anyone's on a time constraint.
We'll go. Yeah, does anyone on a time crunch here?
Okay, thanks. So, thank you for, for being here. Again, I want to start off with the same question that I'll be asking every department here. You know, I know there are other things that you would like to have, but we need to talk about what, what are the things that we can cut from your department in order for us to, to be able to pass the budget based on the situation we're in? Have you, you know, if you haven't thought of that before now, I understand that, but that is something I'd like you to, to come to us with. If not, you know, we will have to make some of the decisions on our own.
Yeah, so I think I can speak to the budget process thus far and may not meet your expectation as a council member. We were very conscious in our approach to PLI, to this budget. We identified savings upfront through our requests and then worked to highlight positions that we thought were critical, the supervisor position and the project manager. And in lieu of taking an approach to either increase expenses or other approaches to fund those, made swaps. And I think what I would say in the moment is we've tried to look very critically at what we need in the two requests that we made. I think in my mind, as a director or something that has an impact for the next five or 10 years, I, that being said, understand the, and recognize the financial constraints and happy to work and have a conversation on how we can approach a budget that council is comfortable with. I think I would look for guidance in terms of what, what are you, what is your target for the overall budget? So that we, each department can have an understanding of what that reality is. And I would, I would, absent understanding that context, it's tough to speak to that, but very open to that. Have already started that process and understand that this will not be as straightforward and will be a pretty complex budget process this year.
Yeah, and, and you know, I understand that and I think the thing that is, I, I want to be cognizant of is that, you know, I, I said this earlier, so I guess I'll say it again, but like, you've probably looked at how to tighten your budget leading up to this process. We just need to tighten everyone's budget more. And, you know, I, I do imagine that there are different departments that took that belt tightening more seriously than others as the, you know, up to this point, and we weren't part of that process. But what we've inherited now, we are now going to have to figure out how to deal with. So, you know, we, I guess like I, I'm trying to find a way to exactly say this, but like, we can't, we can't give credit for like the belt tightening that you've already done because we didn't see that. And what we've inherited now, we now have to figure out on our own what to do with. So unfortunately, that's, you know, that's not your fault. That's, you know, the fault of what it's put in front of us here. So. Another thing, you know, it is funny, speaking kind of specific to PLI. As a staffer, I feel like I engaged with PLI every moment of the day. I engage with PLI a lot less now that I'm a member and I'm trying, you know, I've kind of been deferring to my staff on a lot of these things, like they're the people that are, are dealing with your department. I, I don't know the number, but like probably half of the calls that we get end up being a PLI, something that has, PLI has a hand in, right? And I, you know, I don't get the opportunity to work my phones as often as I, I would like to. So kind of want to talk to them, you know, about their opinions on some things. But one other thing that I, that I talked with you, Director, about a lot was that when I was a staffer, I spent a ton of time in the magistrate's office. That was every Thursday morning, I was in Judge Ricciardi's office. Every Thursday afternoon, I was in Judge King's office with the inspectors there. Have you had an opportunity yet to shadow your inspectors in court? I know that was something we talked about when we were meeting, that that was a goal for you to, to go through some of those shadows.
I have not. It is a goal for the new year. Other, other things arose during that time period, but it is a goal. And have done some limited shadowing, but not of court system and that is on my priority list for early next year.
I, you know, I, I can't speak highly enough of, of actually seeing what that process looks like, because I think so many people think it looks like, like something that it does not look like.
Well, I've, I've experienced it. So like I have been subpoenaed and, and/or have helped testify. So when I say haven't shadowed, I haven't seen current magistrates and the reality of the work of my staff. So, and I have a goal of understanding and the work of all of our staff at a certain level and shadowing and observing what they do so that I can help support them better to make sure they have the resources, tools that they need. So I am committed to doing that. I have not had the opportunity as of yet.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot of inefficiencies in that process. I think that, you know, folks at the management level need to be, need to see that more of, of what, what can be done to, you know, make sure that we've got good addresses and make sure that we're filing the, the correct way and, you know, so we're not just filing paperwork to file paperwork.
So I would say while I have not shadowed and understood, the supervisors are very active in supporting the inspection staff and being involved in the court process. And I, I think the difficulty is performing the volume of work that we have at the same time of trying to say and recognize this is not efficient. How do we make it more efficient? And would hope that with, or expect that with Neil's team in the new division, as well as a full director cohort, that we can start to recognize those things and work to improve them. We, well, I may not have intimate knowledge. Rest assured, those under me do. And it's a matter of then taking that knowledge and how do we understand how the work happens now, so that we can look at if we change this component of it, what is the potential outcome and then test, does it actually achieve desired results? So we, this is something belief strongly in and Rob, myself and a couple other of the supervisors from his group attended Code Enforcement Conference in Memphis, KIMA. And it is a goal to look at the enforcement process more strategically and you can see hopefully some signs of that in the way that we presented the data, that we're not simply displaying, here's how, how much we did, looking at finer grain, what are, what's going on? What are those outcomes? And then how does that inform how inspectors work, how we send out notices, et cetera? So it is something we're committed to and also happy to partner with yourself, other council members or any other partners to make that process more efficient.
So the thing that I, I see is that I see supervisors get involved on complicated cases. What, you know, and, and, you know, there will always be edge cases that, that things become challenging. I understand that. That's usually when I'll see, you know, supervisors step in. What we don't usually see is supervisors, you know, like if I'm at court and there's 10 cases, seven have bad addresses, no one shows up, you know, dead end, whatever it is, we're not correcting that, we're correcting the one weird case where it's like a shared property situation and somehow becomes very complicated. That's the case that, that's being addressed, but not the seven that, that were not, you know, filed correctly or we don't have a name for, or we're not addressing that, that inefficiency there. That's always been the problem that I've seen in a, you know, like we're, we need help on the complicated cases, but we also need help on the bulk cases, the bulk that is not, you know, not, not much is being done with. So again, I, I, I think that, you know, definitely should be something that you're looking at doing. You know, attending the, the magistrates and I recommend that to, you know, to all my colleagues as well. One, the, this was kind of news to me. The additional cost for demolitions because of the, the lead remediation. Do we have a, can, Rob, can you give me like a percentage on how much that adds to the, the cost of a demo?
I'm sorry, the lead remediation or the asbestos remediation?
The, the, the local lead rules that we passed here, I guess to, I, I didn't know that that was something that we locally controlled with doing wet demos and, you know, the water and, and the, the weight on that as, as we heard earlier.
Well, the lead remediation, our local ordinances require that a member of their team is certified in. Well, the lead remediation, uh, um, our local ordinances require that a member of their team is certified in. In that particular process, as well as, like you said, having a water pig there for, um, the wet demos. As far as the costs, I would say, uh, the barrier to entry as far as purchasing the equipment is the major cost and it's spread out over many demos, so. Um, very minimal.
Okay, oh, that's, that's good to know, I, I want to champion whatever we can do to make. Demos cheaper, um, you know, I've, I've. Uh, brought that up before, I'd be, be happy to help however we can and ways to make this cheaper. I understand the environmental impact of the demolitions, but there's also an environmental impact of, of all the abandoned, the accumulation of abandoned buildings. And all the seepage that happens there, you know, we're, I know we're concerned about the asbestos and the, and the lead, but we're also have to be concerned about. There's a building that has those things standing right there as well, so, you know, there, there's no easy, easy answer for that. The other thing that I, I wanna mention, so, you know, we've talked about rental registry a lot and. I think council was really taken aback this year when we learned that. There was an injunction that was much more significant than we thought it was, I think council all kind of was under the impression that. Rental registry is coming, there's a voluntary period and there'll be a mandatory period and there's a little injunction, but it's no big deal. Turns out actually is a very major deal, so we hired so that we could. Uh, enact rental registry, but there, you know, is no immediate deadline here where. Rental registry could go into effect. What are we doing with all those extra inspectors?
They are already performing, uh, some of those, uh, inspections, so during the voluntary period, there has been a non. Uh, insignificant portion of individuals who have applied, um. They are also working on, um, responding to citizen complaints and they are. Portion of, uh, they're performing a lion's share of, if I recall from our presentation, about forty-eight thousand. Inspection investigations, so, um, they are, uh, looking at condemned buildings. Uh, assessing those, uh, score of one to four, uh, there, uh, and. Part of the anticipation of rental registry and, uh, the additional positions was also that. PLI would no longer perform weeds and debris inspections, so if you look at the volume of those complaints, it is. Um, uh, one of the highest, if not the highest complaint volume across the city, um, and. That takes a lion's share of work and they were still performing that work while the voluntary period was there, so. Um, uh, doing what they were doing before in addition to, uh, the. Inspections for the rental units, um, not sure if that answers your question or if you have any.
No, yeah, I mean, uh, so that transfer, we did hire the anti-litter inspectors in DPW. Um, I had coffee with them the other morning, there's 10 of them or so, I, I wonder why we can't make that transfer at this point.
It, uh, it's in process, so it, it's not, uh, uh, looking to ensure that the timing doesn't cause disruption. For either side and also technical issues of how do we route the complaints that currently come into three-one-one. Appropriately to the one-stop system, so at this point, uh, uh, I would describe it as. Dotting i's and crossing t's so that we don't create more havoc, uh, by transferring that work, so.
But when that does get transferred, that, that you're taking away a large workload from, from that team.
The workload will decrease, yes.
Okay, so, the, yeah, I, I, I'm just getting curious what, what we're doing with them until.
So.
The registry goes live.
That means better work, so right now, capacity primarily to respond to complaints. Uh, that could mean potentially saying, uh, condemned properties, we're not looking at the. At those once a year, we're looking at those twice a year, or we have a progressive scale and if it's a number four, we're looking at that every month. Uh, that could mean, uh, more, uh, with a combined maintenance inspector position, when we start filling those, having more. Uh, proactive inspections of life safety systems in buildings, so, uh, there will be work. Uh, and I think it will change the nature of the work, uh, and looking to do what we do, but do it better and more comprehensive, so. Happy to have those conversations, I am confident that rental registry will go into full enforcement, I think. Uh, look to partner, uh, with the, uh, incoming, uh, solicitor when. The incoming mayor comes in and to push that, I think, uh, it, uh, court system being what it is. Have limited control, but confident that the legislation that you all passed is narrowly tarrel tailored. And will meet the challenges that, uh, opposing parties have raised, so I, I think. It's a matter of time and will and, uh, I'm committed and I've heard hopefully that you guys are still committed. And look, working with the law department, uh, to, to push those levers that we have available to ensure that that. Uh, case is resolved as quickly as possible so that we can do what we all recognize we can do, we can have rental registry like. Many of the municipalities surrounding us.
Yeah, I, I wish that was the case, I would love to see rental registry enacted. I just, from what I've heard from the, you know, and I'm, I'm not attorney and don't pretend to, you know, have a lot of knowledge with that, but. From what I heard, I, I'm not confident that this is the, the vehicle we'll be able to do this with, so I do wanna make sure that. While we're figuring that out, that we're staffing appropriately for, you know, for the situation we're in now, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I've got for me.
All right, thank you, uh, Councilperson Strasberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you all, I appreciate you being here and I appreciate your work. Um, I wanna say first that I think that the leadership team that you've assembled and that has been able to, um, you know. Uh, really come together over the last couple of years is, is, is serving the department really well, um, uh, to have assistant and deputy directors. To, such as those at this table, um, I've seen a deference and it's been wonderful to be able to reach out to various people and, um. And interact in various ways, um, at this table and really get, um, responsiveness and professionalism and, um, you know. It, it's a complicated department, so to get the answers that I need when I, you know, I've been told it maybe a couple of times and I just needed that. Third reminder of how something works is really, is really helpful, so thank you. I want to share, uh, you know, in my colleague's desire to, to, to better fund both demolitions. And the land bank, they're like different sides of the same coin and, um, although the district I represent doesn't experience as. As high volume as really any other district, um, it's something that like is imperative for citywide stabilization, so. Um, I'd like to find a way to fund demolitions without, um, without. Decreasing the public health and safety aspect of it when it comes to lead, so I think that's an imperative piece, I think we have to keep that. And find a way to fund it fully, um, I am glad to hear of this shift to a nighttime inspector. The thing I'll also add in addition to what Councilwoman Kale Smith said that, yeah, we're experiencing people like. Probably e- doing illegal work inside, which I know is harder to detect, but sometimes can be inside their homes to like illegally convert a. Convert a single-family home into an apartment or into an Airbnb, a short-time rental, um, look forward to passing that legislation. And really having some regulations in place to help with that, but in the meantime, having those nighttime inspectors or all-hours inspectors would be incredibly helpful. But the other thing is for vape shops, um, the vape shops that are operating and really just even in a small way violating our. Um, code, um, or, or, or code, um, our building code around light pollution, right, and like. That the brightness of the lights is, is something small that like death or three thousand cuts we could get at in addition to, you know, the. The, uh, the legislation that I support, so, multiple ways that we could be utilizing those nighttime inspectors. I have, uh, I, I feel that One Stop is working. It's, I've seen a decrease in our office in the number of people who are, you know, maybe not contractors themselves, maybe just trying to do a project. At their own home, um, having trouble reaching. You know, a resolution on a certain, a sticking point, and sure, they still come to us when there is a sticking point, and what I'm finding is that. There's still, it's still happening, when it's happening, it's happening around the number of revisions that are needed, so. That is where I'd like to ask, you know, where can we, um. Where, where are you thinking in terms of further improving that, so that they're just. Yes, sometimes it's the architect that is not communicating or sufficiently, or maybe it's the contractor that's not sufficiently communicating to their, um. To the, to the person who's doing the work, or, you know, to the person who's paying for the work, but, um, how do we minimize the number of revisions that are needed? In a project.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a continual process improvement, we need to understand how we perform the work now. How customers engage, uh, with the system, uh, so that we have a clear map and diagram. What's happening now and then, uh, hone in on specific aspects, so for example, if, uh, number of revisions. Look at that portion of the process and experiment on how we get there, uh, but it's really takes a collaborative approach. And, uh, so far, that collaboration has generally been, uh, city planning. Uh, DOMI, PLI, and IMP, uh, I think what we, uh. Are likely to have even bigger or more significant, uh, leaps are when we engage. Others outside of that group, so I think what we need to be focused on is we're never done and. Understand how we do it and continually look at, uh, an issue, experiment, did it work? Yes or no, if it worked, okay, uh, go on the next thing and, uh, really being systematic about that and. Say that the BDA has set us up to, to take that mindset, uh, when we launched One Stop. Um, back in Labor Day of twenty nineteen, not that I remember for any reason. Our Memorial Day, sorry, uh, the, uh, we thought that being online. Solve all problems and I think, uh, we've gained perspective and understand that, uh, the impact to our customers is not the same as us. And really, uh, taking perspective from you, your constituents and the, our users, uh, ideally what we want. Is something where an applicant knows exactly what we want and ideal state is there are no revisions. And set that as a goal and how do we achieve it, and so that's gonna, uh, uh, require a lot of innovation, but its starting point is. What do we do now, and if we don't understand that, there's no way we can start to move towards that goal, so. Uh, our team is committed to it, our partners, uh, city planning, DOMI and IMP are committed and looking for opportunities. To widen that pool and really work on, uh, that improvement and make sure that. The system works for the widest range of individuals, so we can make it work great for staff. If that makes it worse for customers, that's not good, so what works, uh, best for everyone who's using it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, and I think the opening of the in-person counter is a huge benefit. And I'll say the same thing I said to, to planning, not to totally repeat myself, but it's slightly different context here that, you know, we, we still need. We, we need some system for responding by phone so that the person who is struggling to operate. You know, the, the online or can't come down and, and, or just has like, they, they don't actually need to come in person, I think even. Even more robust sort of phone, um, customer ser- phone-based customer service would be.
We, we, we have that, I, and understand that, uh, that staff is doing many roles, but. Uh, our permit technicians are answering our general phone line four-one-two-two-five-five-two-one-seven-five. During our customer service hours of nine to three, and they're also, uh, answering the online chats, serving customers at the counter. Or working electronically, so, uh, we have that dedication, PLI is also, uh, attempted to be. Uh, forward-leaning in terms of contact, if you look at our webpage, it has our names, our email addresses and our cell phone numbers, so. We need pictures, although.
I think that makes a big difference, I really do, and an in-person booklet that people can look at too, once, yeah.
I would like to have a little bit of anonymity, but probably don't have that anymore, uh, so, uh, I think we're, we're approaching that. And I, we take customer service, uh, very seriously, so, um, uh. Uh, under Monica, I'd give a shout-out to, to Gabby, who is the One Stop PGH, uh, customer service manager. She's done a great job with the counter launch and her team does excellent work, uh, uh, helping customers and. I tell them to use those resources and if those resources aren't working, escalate, but, uh, we are here, um, there may be wait time. Uh, we do have capacity, uh, a limited capacity and, uh. Happy to work with yourself and others to improve that and make sure that, uh, those resources are readily accessible and then work on capacity. If, uh, we're not meeting the mark currently.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, that's really helpful to know and, um, probably part of the reason that our calls have decreased, so. Um, and I, you know, in the spirit of always, you know, if, if it never being totally completed. As we, as we look to expedite permits even further, whatever that looks like, there's like probably a hundred different ways you could go about it, but if that means. You know, um, an expectation of expedited service by meeting certain, you know. Um, standards in a development or paying into it, right, ideally that balances out and pays for itself, so there's not a need for like. Any kind of actual budgetary increase, but, um, that certainly in addition to the actual. Implementation of rental registration, of course, could be two different pressure points and something I think we'd wanna continue to be. Working with you on to, um, to make sure it, you know, you're hearing from us, which is an extension of, of the public as well. And in, in that, um, vein, this is my very last question, um, the, what I've heard with some. Very large projects is that there is, uh, a different inspector for a different. Portion of the project, um, so there's a sort of an, in, an uneven experience from the part of, say, the. The project manager when it comes to, especially if it's a complicated project, like a really, really big project, um, when it comes to. You know, the phase over here with the, with, with the retail and the phase over here with the electrical, uh, in the parking and there's like a. You know, um. Just this, this comment that it would be a lot simpler and probably more efficient to have the same inspector. For the entirety of the project, which I can understand why you wouldn't want to, um, because there are some. I don't know, there's the potential for problems on the other side of that, so can you, can you speak to how you balance that, how you're thinking of that and maybe I'm. Speaking about a project that has, is, has, is basically wrapping up and, you know, this was how it was two years ago, but not currently the case, cuz I know things are changing quickly.
It'd be helpful if you can follow up later and provide some particulars so we can look at the specific case, I, I would say generally, um. Uh, or, or a majority of instances, it is, uh, one inspector performing, uh. Uh, most of the inspections, so, uh, for the previously building permit, now BDA. Mechanical, fire alarm, fire suppression, um, the, um, uh, some of the aspects. That aren't inclusive, uh, plumbing by Allegheny County, um, and then currently are, uh. We have third-party agencies who are performing the, uh, inspections for electrical for commercial structures.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, so those could be cases, uh, potential that, um, inspections from other agencies. Additionally, but our goal would be, uh, if we do have multiple individuals working on it. That we are coordinating and we are ensuring that those services are as seamless as possible, uh, so. Would like to follow up, understand the particulars of the case that you're talking about and see how that might inform, uh, how. We assign work and how we perform it, you know, uh, we are always open, uh, to feedback and looking at the ways. Uh, we perform work so that we, uh, can meet the people's needs.
Okay, but what I'm hearing is that you're, you're committed to cross-training and to ensure that to the extent possible, every, it's the same inspector for as many things as possible.
Yeah, right now, uh, so for, uh. Yeah, right now, uh, so for, uh, we, two predecessors, Laura Kennedy started that work. So, um, uh, we have a construction code inspector. They have a building accessibility, energy, uh, mechanical and fuel gas. And then fire, uh, uh, fire protection system certifications. We have stormwater, which swaps mechanical for, uh, the plumbing. And then our electrical also have energy. So, uh, the, the one, uh, moderate's specialization is for electrical. And, uh, while, uh, we don't have any immediate plans, that we have discussed internally, what, might we change that in the future? Uh, what might, what that might look like. But our general approach is as much cross-certification as possible and minimize the number of people. It's more efficient to generally send one person there. But depending on some of the larger wards, uh, we do have some of those permits divided between people.
Thank you. I won't repeat what I said. You heard what I said to planning. You know, I'm, I'm, um, in line with Councilperson Charlin's comments. Just where it's gonna be, it's gonna be, uh, a challenge for all departments to sort of reach a, um, a point where we can pass a responsible budget. So we'll be asking the same and follow up.
Yeah, and just ask that you guys provide some definition for what responsible budget means from, for you guys.
Absolutely, will do. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Mosley.
Uh, can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, we can hear you great. Uh, we can hear you really well.
Thank you, yeah. I only have a couple of questions. Obviously, um, a lot of the important questions have already been asked and raised. I just have, uh, just a few questions. The one, um, is around, you know, uh, securing abandoned properties. And, you know, is it, is it a critical issue i- in my district? You know, recently, my staff and, and public safety and, uh, the Office of Community Health and Safety did a walk, um, around the Homewood Business Corridor, some of the streets that run parallel. And, you know, identified numerous, um, um, buildings that were, you know, not secure. You know, doorways open, abandoned buildings with windows open, where you could clearly see, you know, activity had been, you know, happening there. And obviously, there was easy access, you know, in, in, in and out. You, um, you know, what, you know, kind of approach, you know, does, you know, PLI take in, you know, in addressing it? And, and how, um, can, you know, other stakeholders be supportive in the process? Cause I know it's somewhat of a game of whack-a-mole. It's like a number of properties in the district I keep a close eye on. And, you know, as soon as we get them boarded up, you know, within a week's, if not days, you know, you can see that, you know, folks have, have gotten back in. So you can talk a little bit about the process of, you know, securing abandoned properties and trying to prevent squatting and, and, you know, people being inside those for the, you know, the whole litany, you know, reasons why we don't want, you know, people in abandoned buildings. But understanding with the issues around the unhoused and the challenges we're facing as a city, you know, it's an inevitability that, you know, people are going to be, you know, occupying, you know, abandoned, uh, residences and, you know, in some cases, you know, commercial buildings as well that are abandoned.
Sure, thanks. Uh, I think, um, one and first and foremost, we can't be everywhere all at once. And a large percentage of our enforcement work is initiated by 311 complaints or, uh, public inquiries. So I'd always recommend the public, yourself or any other individuals, if they have a concern to dial 311 or use the portal to submit a complaint. If they have a safety concern, like an immediate thing to call 911. Beyond that, I think, uh, we need to, the complexity is, uh, the process from us, identifying and issuing a citation for the property owner and then that work being performed by the, the Department of Public Works. So I think there's an opportunity, uh, for, uh, PLI, DPW and your office to maybe look at, uh, recent incidents and see, uh, how we're performing in the work. And is there a way to modify that to address, uh, uh, properties where, unsecured properties where people are continually breaking in? And that begs to me a, a different, um, approach than what we may for one where people are, it's a concern that someone may versus someone is actively. So I, I don't have an answer for what we will do, but I think I can commit for, uh, PLI to engage with your office and any other interested parties. And then ask that DPW join us to look at how we can address that. And I think it's something that could have an impact for other communities. I'm sure you're not, uh, the only one, uh, who's dealing with it.
Right. Well, I, I appreciate that. And, and kind of as a follow-up to that, um, how often or if you do, um, engage with fire? Cause that's also other, uh, you know, issue that, you know, is, is inextricably tied to abandoned buildings, particularly in my district. And I know that we provide, um, properties, um, to, to, to Chief Jones. Um, you know, and, and we get aware of them. So it, to me, I think, uh, it makes sense for us to kind of coordinate those efforts. We talked actually about this earlier. Uh, that's why I was late to the meeting. I have a, a monthly working group meeting with various stakeholders from public safety, social services, um, fire. And, um, definitely would love to have someone from PLI in, at the table as well, kind of looking at the intersection of all the issues, particularly in the Homewood Business Corridor from obviously the drug activity, um, folks unhoused, uh, mental health, um, you know, uh, harm reduction work going on and other social services work and all that, you know, compounds one another. And then, um, spills into the abandoned vacant and blighted, uh, buildings within the corridor as well. And, you know, seeing an uptick in those being, um, occupied and trying to create that communication loop between the folks on the ground and the folks in government to let, um, you know, Pittsburgh Fire know that wicked buildings are, you know, abandoned and there's activity going on. Cause obviously they have various protocols depending on if they're, you know, going into an abandoned building on fire or an abandoned occupied, you know, building on fire. So even from a public safety standpoint and a public health standpoint, um, you know, they're all important. So, um, to what degree do you interact, uh, you know, with Pittsburgh Fire, particularly around abandoned buildings or abandoned buildings that, you know, chronically catch on fire?
Yeah, I'm just gonna speak briefly and then defer, uh, to Rob to provide some additional detail. I'm further removed from the work, but I would say, uh, there is a big opportunity to partner and collaborate with the Fire Bureau more. I think there are some touchpoints, but it, it's not enough. And I would say from my experience, uh, there are instances where, uh, we don't find out about a fire until much later or, uh, potentially the news. So I, I think, um, the types of problems you're identifying are complex. And in order to, to address them effectively, it's gonna take all the partners working together, to look for solutions. So I'd say committed to, uh, participating in those discussions. And then Rob can speak to if there's any more specific of what we're doing right now.
Just to echo, excuse me, just to echo the director's sentiment and, um, uh, your sentiment, councilman. This could be a goal that we could strive for, for communication between all parties involved, such as police, fire, PLI, OCHS, and DPW. We can, we could, uh, look to explore those avenues and shore up any, uh, gaps in communication for reporting of fires. That's, but for the most part, fire is usually pretty good at reporting things or, or our on-call personnel.
Yeah, I, I think there are, like, in terms of partnerships, the Fire Bureau broadly from a enforcement standpoint is not our strongest collaboration. We're not strangers, uh, but I don't know that we'd say we were besties, if you want. You wanna hear a teenage girl from maybe a decade ago.
I think I definitely, definitely understand the reference. And my final question is, um, you know, specifically around work, the work that we did together. And I do have to say that, you know, I really applaud, um, the efforts of, of PLI, particularly in relation to, um, the collaboration with, with my office. You know, addressing some really, uh, numerous challenging issues from, you know, Homewood House, obviously to Maple Ridge. Um, in, in, in that vein, you know, um, outside of, you know, fully functioning rental registry, what, what are, what other things can we do? And I know we've had this, this conversation, um, you know, as we were both, you know, wrestling with how to address the crisis at Maple Ridge. You know, how can we be more, uh, uh, proactive at addressing, you know, uh, the domesales that may be uninhabitable or are uninhabitable?
To me, uh, it's community engagement and education. So, uh, what struck me about Maple Ridge is, uh, if I recall, the, it got on the city's radar because of, uh, possibly one of your staffers seeing something on social media versus any formal engagement with the city. So, um, uh, you know, constituents who either don't know what the city does or don't trust the city and don't want to make any assumptions, but they, uh, they didn't contact us and it was kind of happenstance that brought us all there. So to me, it's that, uh, engagement so that community know we're there. And then, uh, that they can notify us of things. So in an ideal world, um, uh, pick a point in the future, the residents of Maple Ridge, another Maple Ridge, uh, they, their heat went out. They know that's not right and they call PLI. They grant us access and we can take action through code enforcement. So one of the side benefits of, um, the rental registry adoption was it changed how we adopted the property maintenance code. And now we have provisions that, um, can also be enforced by other agencies, but we chose not to include. So plumbing, heating, et cetera. So I think it's working with you, your office, uh, other council members. How do we, um, engage with the community so they reach out to us? And then how do we partner to address these situations? If we have someone who can let us in, uh, we can take action and you saw that. But that also means we, as a city, I would argue, need to take a similar approach to Maple Ridge where we're ensuring that there is housing for those people. So that, uh, we hold the owners accountable, but we also don't leave people out on the sidewalk in the middle of the night in January. So I really appreciate, uh, appreciated you and, uh, the mayor and others who brought it to our attention and helped to bring that team to the table. So, um, I think let's see what we learn from that. And how do we, how do we create a system where it's not ad hoc? Where, uh, where we can get a signal and it happens without, uh, I'm happy to participate, but it's a sign of a system that's broken, or I shouldn't say broken, that doesn't work effectively if it takes a text message for me, to me to have something happen. We need to make it so it's routine, uh, and it doesn't require, uh, your, uh, taking action or other, uh, executive action, that it's like just the business of the city. Residents know that this is the standard for housing and they know how to contact the city. And, uh, so the city can come in and confirm whether or not it meets that standard. And then that we hold the owner accountable to ensure that that rental unit, um, meets the minimum standards for it to be livable and habitable. So I think really partnering with you. So, uh, happy to meet and follow up and have those conversations. Not sure, Rob, anything to add or?
Well, thank you. Well, that, um, that, that exhausts my, my questions for today. And again, I really appreciate, um, you know, you know, your collaborative spirit and, and being willing to work with us. You know, also Anthony Shul has been fantastic to work with over the last few months. You know, we've been able to get a lot of things, you know, done and just, you know, have a, you know, coordinated effort at, you know, addressing, you know, a district that, you know, has a lot of challenges, you know, when it comes to the particular issues that we've been discussing today. So, um, thank you again and, um, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, councilman. And that, unless there's some follow-up brings.
I do have one quick follow-up.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, just, uh, Councilman Mosley reminded me, I forgot to ask. So, um, I had a, I had a meeting with the fire chief following the Jefferson apartment fire, the big one in Squirrel Hill in the apartment building. And, uh, we talked about his, um, you know, he had tried to put in some sprinkler legislation back in like 2018 and it, it didn't, you know, there was lots of reaction. At any rate, um, uh, you know, in that particular fire, you know, there were, I mean, talking to some of the folks who lived there, there were, there were people who didn't know, that who knew to leave their apartment only because they smelled the fire, like in the, right? So, so there really was no system that I, that's my understanding, that there was just like nothing in that building. And of course, that has to do with rental registry. And I think maybe the fire might have started in the basement or something electric. At any rate, um, who would? Cause I would like to get a conversation going about revisiting some kind of a combination, whether, I mean, obviously it sounds like sprinklers all across the border not, is not maybe feasible, but, but, um, but something like, maybe like wired alarm systems where like if there's, if there's a fire over here, you know about it over here. Or sprinkler systems in the common areas or in the basement or whatever. So who, and that, you know, that's obviously a conversation with the Fire Bureau. So who, who on your team would be the right person to kind of get that conversation going?
Why don't you email, um, me, Alyssa, Rob, and you have Amanda Lindner's, uh, email as well?
I can find, yeah.
Yeah, uh, and then we'll confirm who I would also recommend at some point as we develop any options that we include the law department to ensure that what we're considering is within, uh, scope of our authority and appropriately crafted to meet any challenges.
Okay, yeah, just to try and get something in place that is doable, right?
Yep.
And keeps people safe, but, you know, yeah, sort of find the happy medium there. And then maybe we can, that'll spark this other conversation with, with the, the Fire Bureau as well. So, okay, thanks. That's all. Oh, and, uh, as far as I, we, we actually had an experience with, we, we put a, a porch on our house. And, um, uh, my contractor was my husband. And when things were not going quickly, it was indeed his fault. He was the one who had not gotten back. So I was like, is, is PLI, he's like, no, 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 it's me. Anyway, thanks.
Okay, thanks. I don't know what that was. Oh, okay, that was, okay. Yeah, all right, thanks. All right, um, so, um, I have just a few questions here. So thanks for answering all, um, all these questions here from members. So going back to your slides, you had a slide that, that talked about, it was a pie chart. And we don't have to go back to it, but basically there was a, a section that said no service. And, uh, I think that's, uh, something I don't know, anything like what that term means.
Yeah, so.
That was when it goes to the magistrate, no service.
Yeah, so that's, uh, an instance where the magistrate dismissed the court case because they were unable, uh, uh, in their determination to, uh, provide appropriate service to the defendant. So that's a, a decision made by the magistrate.
Wait, so who, who's not able to provide the service?
Uh, magistrate, so they would send, um.
Like what's an example?
Any number, they, they can't get, they send mail and the defendant does not respond to it. So, it's really up to the.
No service in terms of mail, I've heard that before, yes.
Yeah, 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 notice. So, the magistrate sends a, a actual criminal complaint, says he's, here's your charges, do you plead guilty or innocent? And they are making that determination and that outcome based on whatever standards they have in place in terms of whether that defendant got appropriate legal notice of the hearing.
Seems to come up a lot, you know?
What?
That comes up a lot. I knew there was a, something, you know, I know, I think that was the, the reason why the ticketing, the quality of life ticketing was birthed, because of Councilperson Charlin's, like, desire to get to someone, right?
Yeah, I would say in terms of a proportion of the cases that go to court, it is not insignificant, but if you look at the overall court or overall cases, we are resolving a large percentage before we go to court. Not discounting the need to work on providing appropriate service so that when we do take someone to court, that we get an outcome we want. But overall, in the roughly 19,000 cases, the volume of ones that are dismissed for no service are pretty small.
All right, we don't have to talk about this here, but I wanted to just say that I'm curious to know, like, the more in depth of that, like of that section of the pie chart, what we do after, you know, that determination is made. So, then, there's also a no violation section?
Yeah, so that means.
And I, yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with that because it happens a lot and I'd like to figure out a way to correct that. I hear that you have a 24-hour person, you know, that's driving a four-wheel, four-wheel, four-wheeler around? But, but, one second, I just want to finish my thought. But I, I think what I want to get here, get out of here is the no violation is, you know, something that comes up in my office a few times. So, for instance, the lights were brought up on the vape shops. And, you know, you can't, you can't go and look at that violation during the day, you have to go at nighttime. And so, we continually get something back like, no violation found. Well, it's like, and it was like, you know, documented that they went on at 11 o'clock AM. And it's like, well, yeah, that's, so we have to figure out, like, is there some way in 311 to say like this is a nighttime issue, this is a, you know, this is when, is when it gets dark out issue, like what's?
Yeah, I think.
How can we remedy this?
I think we can have follow-up conversations to look at, I see two generalized scenarios. One is like intermittent issue or something that occurs outside of our normal hours, how do we address that? And our experimenting with schedules may address some of that. I think the other is, how do we, the case you're talking about, there may also be like a, an ordinance issue. So, but I think hopefully our change in schedule will help to address some of those. And then we can also look at, say, noise issues. Sometimes those are associated with equipment that happen at specific times that are outside of our hours. So, we can hopefully address by potential schedule changes as well as look at how do we actually perform the work in investigating something that either occurs intermittently or occurs at only specific times of the day so that we take a different approach in terms of gathering evidence.
Okay. All right, so then the, the last thing I just wanted to mention was that, we can talk about this offline, but I just wanted to say that I'm interested in strategic demo with the land bank. We have a for-sale program and I, I see some challenges on, even if myself, I'm, you know, looking for a house and I'm thinking, okay, this is a good opportunity for me, I can, you know, my partner and I can buy this house and then we can fix it up, you know, I don't have a family here, but this doesn't look pretty viable since no one else care, like, not no one else, but there is a lack of, you know, attention to this street. And one of those issues is other vacant abandoned properties that can't be saved. And, you know, there, you know, that would really go a long way to demo properties on that, on that street. So, obviously, I'm talking about something specific to the land bank, but, you know, if there is a way that we can do strategic demo, and I realize that probably would take additional funds since you're going on a scale and maybe those, you know, from, you know, worst to least worst. And, you know, maybe the, the ones there don't fit into that. So, I don't, maybe that's something that we have to think about at the land bank, maybe that's a line item for us that we coordinate with you on demo for our strategic plan. But anyway, I just want to mention that here.
Open to those conversations.
Okay, all right, thanks. Any other comments? All right, I just want to recognize that you have a very nice pin on, says one, one-stop PG, we have two pins on.
Yeah.
But the one says one-stop PGH and feel free to drop some off if you have, have some more. We, we can wrap the one-stop. All right? Well, thank you, everyone. And, and as for now, we will be recessed, I think. I'm at least gonna take a break, I'm not sure. I think Councilperson Strasburger will be chairing this meeting and we're gonna take a short break and we'll be back, we're in recess.